All right, this is the Municipality of Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission, November 5, 2012. May I have the roll call, please?
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Bruce Phelps. Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prus.
Here.
Ray Hickel.
Here.
Peter Mulcahy.
Here.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
Thank you very much. There are no minutes of any meetings, so we'll go right into Special Order of Business. I would like to discuss at this time the schedule. For those of you that received my email, there was, I proposed that we move the December 3 work session on the Campbell Creek Estuary to December 10. But Commissioner Prus also had a suggestion.
Since there was nothing on December 3, is that right?
Yes.
That we, for the, that we move the holiday week, the 19th, November 19th, to the December 3 date, and then that holiday week would be off.
Okay.
This is a suggestion.
All right. So what is the wish of the commission regarding all of this? Let's have some comment.
I like Commissioner Prus' idea.
Better than mine, okay.
I thought you were in Hawaii.
Not yet. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, the November 19 meeting has a number of planning documents on them. There's, I think, some new public hearing on the one we just had a work session on, but also the Chugatch Access Plan and the Hill, historic preservation plan, and I think after this evening likely one more. And I think my, my only issue is that I know staff has some deadlines that they're trying to work around, especially related to the two plans that involve the Cabada, and I'm not sure what that timeline does to staff's desire to, to get through both the Planning and Zoning Commission and then on to the Assembly before the end of the year.
All right, so let's ask them that question after we poll the rest of the commissioners. Commissioner Mulcahy.
I understand Commissioner Prus is saying, just, so with no meeting on the 19th, to move that agenda to the 3rd.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Commissioner Parks.
That would also work for me.
Work for you, all right. And that works for you, Commissioner Prus. Commissioner Hickel. Ms. Dean.
I'll go either way.
Okay, so now let me ask staff. Erica, could you tell us what that does? Because that is the preference of all the commissioners.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission, we'll have to look at that tomorrow to see if we have contractual obligations with Cabada to perform by year end. That was my understanding, we did, but we'll have to verify that tomorrow.
All right, and is that the only consideration?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let us know. Thank you. Commissioner Prus, that was a good suggestion. Thank you. All right, just under Special Order of Business disclosures. Do we have disclosures?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner Dees.
No.
Commissioner Hickel.
Yes, I was not present at the September 10, 2012, meeting and will not vote on Resolution 2012-046.
Thank you. Commissioner Prus?
Same thing, I wasn't here on September 10, so Resolution is 12-046.
Thank you.
I'll abstaining from.
Commissioner Mulcahy.
None, sir.
Commissioner Ferguson?
None.
Commissioner Robinson?
None.
And myself, I have, I was not able to attend the October 8 meeting, so I will abstain from Resolution 2012-049 and 2012-050. And Commissioner Yoshimura?
Yes, for the record, I was not present at the September 10 meeting and will be abstaining from voting on Resolution, Resolution 2012-046. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to item number D, the consent agenda resolutions for approval. Are there any objections, any discussion, would anyone like to pull any of the resolutions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull D-1B. This is Resolution 2012-049. I know there are several on the commission who would like to talk about that.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any objections to resolutions for approval for 2012-046 or 2012-04, 050? Then I need a motion for approval. May I have a motion? Ms. Dean. Ms. Dean?
Did you, you, you need to speak?
I'm sorry, yes, I, I motioned to approve D-1A 2012-046 and 2012-050.
All right, thank you very much. That motion has been seconded by Tyler Robinson, seeing and hearing no objection. Those two resolutions are approved. Now on to case 2012-049, resolution. Comments?
Madam Chair, I know that there were several emails that crossed our paths today regarding the fees, and I knew there, I know there's some questions that came up from several people. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to talk about those if we needed to, those emails.
All right, thank you very much. Erica, thank you for calculating the new planning and zoning fee amounts for us so that we could do a comparison. For those of you that did not have an opportunity to look at your email, I have made copies for everyone. Could you explain the chart just a little bit for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three sections in the chart. Section 2120-001, 003, and I believe the other one's 002. Sorry, I don't have them in the correct order. They try to explain the existing fee, the effective date of the last increase, and, sorry, I didn't make these charts, so I'm trying to work them out as well. And the percentage of revenue increase. That would be from chart 001. Looking at 003, the schedule of fees from plating, it's like we have the effective date of the last increase, the fee, what a 12.5% increase would be, and perhaps some notes in that final column. And then on the legal sized sheet, these would be the zoning fees. So you have the description of the fee and the fee amount, the effective date of the last, or the effective date of the last increase, what a 12.5% increase would be, and then, I think, another note column.
So what I'm interested in, when we first discussed this case, the information that was provided to us is that there hadn't been since 2004 an overall price increase in any of the fees, adjusted for inflation. But what I would like to know is what fees and what percent with the proposed 12.5% increase actually would supersede or be greater than the rate of inflation.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission, I had, the staff that put this together is in the Advent section in my group.
Okay.
The NABREX put it together. It's actually the ordinance in the Omnibus Ordinance that's pending the Assembly at this point in time. The, we're prohibited by law from exceeding the CPI, which we've not done. The, the CPI during that period since 2004 is about 22%. We looked at the fees, we determined that 12.5% was probably an appropriate increase, and we went back and looked at those fees that had been adjusted since 2004 and '12. There were a few changes made. None of those exceed the, the 12.5% in total, so all these fees are within a 12.5% raise, range since 2004.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Prus.
Yeah, for the Director, could you tell me what your budget has increased since 2005, percentage-wise?
Dollar, dollar-wise, it, it has to do with labor. Basically, labor's pushed it probably, you know, I, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I can tell you that we've reduced staff by 38% since, in the past three years.
So, so, well, okay, so you had a gross dollar budget of X in 2005, and today it's, it's reduced labor 38%?
It, labor's been reduced, but labor costs have gone up as well, and, but the, but the dollar amounts are probably just a bit above what they were three years ago.
Okay. I'm just trying to compare your, your proposed 12.5% versus your, versus the CPI of 19.3% versus what actually your, your actual budget that you, that you get to work with is. I just trying to.
We really looked at, you know, this is an area-wide function, and that obviously the applicants can't, can't bear the entire cost, but they should pay a proportional cost, and we believe that this is an appropriate proportional cost.
Would you say it's safe to say that, that from 2005 to today, the, the net difference is bet greater than 12.5% for your department?
I would say so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there, so just for clarification, so that I can get my head around all this. When looking at the 2004 char, fees, even with the increases, the intermittent increases for various functions, none of those functions, none of those increases, plus the 12.5%, surpass the 19.3% rate of inflation?
Staff indicated me today, the fee increases in total, none of them exceed the 12.5% in aggregate for all of them since 2004.
Since 2004?
Correct.
Including the proposed fee increase? So I, I'm.
That includes what we're looking at today.
Was there any consideration about phasing in the increases?
Madam Chair, Mr. Prus, no.
No, not maybe five and five, or five and seven, or, or something?
We, we looked at what was the reasonable cost for the, the user in this particular case. We looked at the building safety fees. Administration decided not to adjust building safety fees, but did concur with this fee increase that we're looking at today.
Okay.
Well, I do have a comment that I would like to make. I am not going to support the resolution. I feel that although I certainly sympathize with the increase in cost of labor, that the department had, really has no ability to manage other than through reduction in staff. I also believe that the development community has been very hard hit by the real estate recession of the past few years, and these baby steps that we've seen in the marketplace for the last six months doesn't justify the increase in, in fees. So, and there is widespread objection in the building development community for these increases in fees, and so I regretfully will not be supporting this motion. Commissioner Prus.
I've got one just for a quick question.
Point of order, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This really is just to finalize your resolution, has nothing to do with the particular merits of, it's to finalize your resolution, whether it correctly reflects your last action.
I do understand that, but I think I do have the right not to support the resolution, because it does require a vote. Is that not correct?
You, your resolutions reflect your previous action.
Right.
And you adopt the clarity and the accuracy of the resolutions as staff present them to you.
Right.
Reflect your action.
I understand that, but I think I do have the right not to, not to support the resolution. Don't I?
Madam Chairman, it, the, the vote really is, is the resolution reflective of your previous action?
Yes, I believe that it is. I've read it very carefully.
That's all that's before you?
Commissioner Prus, did you have a question?
I just had a quick question. Based on 2011, or 2011 fees, what, how many dollars would this represent on an annual basis, based on the activity through the department? How many, how many increased dollars, this 12.5%?
Considering the number of applications projected?
Yeah, yeah, just, just what you did, there, there has to be a number that you're projecting in your budget increase. I'm just curious what that dollar amount is.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Prus, I can get you that information. I, I, I don't have it in front of me, so I could, I could get that for you tomorrow.
All right, what is the wish of the commission? Okay. We're going to take a short break and reconvene in six minutes. Thank you. All right, we're back in session. We have a little clarification. The Director has told us that the amount of fee increases will generate approximately $70,000 in additional revenue for the coming year. I have also been advised that we are voting only on the clarity of the resolution as it is reflective in, as to what the decision was by the Planning and Zoning Commissions at the time. So I would entertain a motion for approval. Commissioner Robinson.
Move to approve Resolution 2012-049.
Thank you, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Mulcahy. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing done, that motion is approved. All right, we are now moving on to, there are no other items on the consent agenda, so we're moving on to item E, unfinished business and actions of the public hearing, case 2012-116. The public hearing is closed. This is the Municipality of Anchorage Element of the Comprehensive Plan for Government Hill. For everyone's information, the consultant is going to be teleconferenced in so that he can, she can respond to any questions. What is the wish of the commission? Also, is there any further discussion or comments from staff at this time?
Madam Chair, I'm just wanted to see what the commission's wish was, if you had questions. I'm happy to answer them. I wasn't sure if you wanted to discuss this tonight or postpone, since Commissioner Phelps isn't here, so once you've decided, I'll let the consultant know if he can call in or not.
Commissioner Robinson, you were an important part of a designated subcommittee. You and Commissioner Phelps, have you had discussions about this? Are you prepared to provide us with your guidance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that there was some discussion that I believe many of you saw related to, I think, some fundamental questions that both Commissioner Phelps and I had, and I think other members of this body had, related to the plan. Staff, you know, we, we provided some of that feedback to staff towards the end of last week, or on Friday, I think, and we received a couple of items today. One, an email response from Joni, and a proposed executive summary to be included. I think, you know, that said, I have additional questions, and I'm happy to either follow-up questions here tonight, later this evening, offline, however we'd like to do it, but otherwise I'm prepared to postpone the plan to the 19th or the 3rd, whichever date that becomes.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the commission at this time?
So Madam, Madam Chair, if, if you would like, I have questions, I can go through them, but I could also, you know, postpone those or take those off. You know, I personally would be curious to hear other commissioners' feet, thoughts on, you know, some of the, the back and forth that, that, some of the material that Commissioner Phelps and I had, and probably after time to review what staff presented as well, but again, I can ask those questions tonight, or, or following the meeting, or later on this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, you know, I have a lot of the same feelings Commissioner Robinson had in the questions that were in the dialogue, and I think my biggest concern is where this document fits in the overall planning process with Title 21 and, and the comprehensive plan. I just, there's a lot of information in here, and then I'm not saying it's, it's not correct, but it has a lot of, depending upon whether the bridge goes in or whether it not, and if we approve this plan, how is that going to set the tone for the development of Government Hill? That's my largest concern. This is kind of, if this happens, this is what we're going to do, but what happens if it doesn't happen? I guess that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. I share those concerns. Are there other commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner Mulcahy, and then Commissioner Ferguson.
Just, I was just going to say that, I thought Tyler and Bruce did a fantastic job. They hit all the main points. We got a lot of information today with the draft executive summary, any answers? I've been trying to digest those. I still think that the, the main point is, as was just mentioned here, what will this, what role will this take as part of 2020, as part of the com-plan? What parts will have authority, and what parts are just vision?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
I also appreciate Commissioner Phelps, Phelps and Commissioner Robinson's efforts to get this through. I did feel that a number of the questions that we had asked, we did not receive an answer to. We received comments, adopt the plan, which I was sort of taken aback with, because I don't think they answered our questions. I think they just were, you know, they basically ignored the question when the question should have been answered.
All right, thank you very much. Are there other comments from other commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. On page six of the plan summary insert, the, under the land use map, it says, "These future revisions could occur through a special study by the MOA, MOA, or rezon initiated by the property owners." That is of concern to me, and I'd just like further clarification on that. So how that would be managed, and what would the expense be? And then, under the design principles, further on down the page, "At a future date, these design guidelines may be considered for adoption by the MOA as an overlay district for the neighborhood center." And I'm wondering, as this relates to the rewrite of Title 21, is, would this overlay district go to the Urban Design Commission, or would we see it at planning and zoning? I'm assuming it would be seen at planning and zoning, but, you know, it's still unresolved. If there was a major site plan review within the overlay district, where would, where would that go? And then on page seven, for increased housing opportunities, promote development of medium-density housing in a core that may serve J Bear and help the city to achieve its goals for making best use of available land. I just want to know if there's, what the mechanisms might be that are proposed. And then the, on page eight, the land use key on the scenarios. The scenarios suggest the location and size of various new building footprints. I find that to be very sort of scary, that we're planning building footprints specifically on lots, because I, I think it's difficult to project what the market might be, and if we're getting ourselves into specific footprints. I think that's a difficult scenario. So those are my specific questions. I share the concerns, the general concerns that have already been voiced. Under these circumstances, I think it might be appropriate for a motion for postponement. I suspect that's the general consensus of the commission. May I have a motion?
Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we postpone this till either our next meeting, which, or the meeting of the 19th, I believe, or the following one. I'm not sure exactly when that date is, so it's hard for me to say.
I think it's going to be December 3.
December 3, okay, then that's what we'll say. Then postpone this until December 3.
All right. Thank you. This motion has been seconded by Commissioner Hickel. Is there any objection? Commissioner Robinson, yes, I was going to ask your opinion.
No, thank you. I mean, I approve certainly postponing it. I, you know, again, I had a number of questions that came up. I think staff did a, a good initial job. I still, I still had some concerns, and I'll also some suggestions, and I wondered how the commission, you know, would like to have those addressed, if, if, if we'd like to do something ahead of a meeting rather than in a meeting, and how we might accomplish that. I, you know, again, I'd be willing to, to lend a little bit of time to it, but also entertain others, you know, participating in that, too.
You know, we do have a pretty, pretty full agenda tonight, but if you could just take a few minutes and sort of discuss, or, or tell us what your, what your thoughts and concerns are. Yeah?
Right now? Okay.
In part?
Well, I, do you want, I guess, to staff, these would just be my issues, and whether or not we, we address them, or maybe come back to them tomorrow, or, or, you know, after the meeting. You know, the first, and I'm going to go down the, the email that we had back and forth, and some of the executive summaries, so if you have that in, in front of you. Just on, on the executive summary, there was a, there was a comment to include the executive summary, and you indicated in your comment response to the email that that was included, but you didn't actually. you didn't actually say whether or not things like setting up a community development corporation were proposed to be deleted in the plan or not. So, I think we had through, for example, through some back-and-forth, decided that, no, that really, you know, wasn't the intent. We weren't going to create a new municipal entity, but I didn't see that there was actually a proposed amendment to remove that. So, would you like that to be the commission's amendments that makes that change, or is staff going to propose those changes?
Staff can propose those changes. If you want to propose that amendment as well, that's fine with us. I can certainly write up a proposed change and document where that would happen in the plan. That reference was a little bit confusing to me, just because I think the comment was regarding a public entity, and so the, or a municipal entity, and so the community development corporation, I wasn't seeing that that was a municipal entity, so I was a little bit confused about that particular comment.
Okay, then I guess my comment there would be, either clarify what it is, or know that it'll be proposed to be deleted by the commission.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. The other thing, moving on to number two, you know, the, we talked about the overlay districts, or just the general principles that would be utilized when you go through a road design, and down at the bottom of your comments, you said you hope to have those to us by Tuesday or Wednesday, so I just wanted to confirm that we're going to have a list of principles to us that, in some fashion, could be incorporated into the plan?
Absolutely, and we had, I just felt that that was better if we could get our consultants to weigh in on that, as well as Carol Wong and Christine, who is just back today from training. So, we would like them to weigh in on it, and we'll hopefully have that to you by tomorrow, Wednesday.
That'd be great, and just for the benefit of the commission, that was, you know, it kind of goes along the lines of, how is this plan going to be used, and if it's to be used to help sort of set the context of a project of some kind, then, to the degree that the scenarios don't touch on everything, because they're so specific in a sense, I think it would be valuable to have some general principles that the community felt was important. So, it would kind of fit on that, how do you, how do you use this thing, and I think, personally, I think that would be helpful. The other issue, and I only, we'll get into maybe two more beyond that, was this, this list of scenarios, and how those scenarios are to be applied. And I actually am more comfortable with how scenarios are described in the executive summary. In the email response, it talks about that a preferred scenario will be endorsed by the Government Hill community in early 2013, and become an amendment to the Government Hill neighborhood plan. The way that it's described in the executive summary doesn't really talk about that. It doesn't talk about coming back with a preferred scenario later, or amending the plan. It talks about the scenarios being used in a very generalized sense, as kind of laying out the groundwork of what could happen if a lot of different things happened. And I frankly like the way that it's described. I think it provides a little more assurance of what these scenarios are, and what, and how they can be utilized by us, by other bodies, and I'm more comfortable with it that way than simply saying that we're going to come back with a preferred scenario, and somehow, in a couple of months' time, we're going to really know specifically where all these things could happen. So, I'd really like, you know, sort of reconciling staff's comments on those issues.
Okay. Do you, just a question, so you prefer the way that it's described in the executive summary?
Yeah, but if this is coming back in a couple of months, and you think that there's a real chance that you're going to know certainly what the preferred scenario is, you know, number one, I'd say, why didn't you have a preferred scenario when this came forward? But, number two, I tend to think that that's premature in so many ways, but I think there's this general notion of, is there going to be a preferred scenario coming back at some point that becomes incorporated in the plan, or are these just really illustrative and not necessarily binding? And that's what the executive summary seems to indicate to me.
Well, the executive summary is explaining how the scenarios are depicted in the plan as it is right now. The intent of these scenarios is to lay out a number of options for the community, so that they can make an informed decision when the right time arises, so that they can move forward with a particular scenario, or a combination of the elements from the scenarios. The point of having three scenarios was to provide the community with options. There are a lot of unknowns right now, especially having to do with the KAC project and the timing of that project. Also, other unknowns are financing and feasibility capabilities for investing in that area. So, the point, again, of having the three scenarios was to give them some options. Now, the community has expressed a strong desire to not have to pick a scenario before the plan is adopted. The main reason for this is because of the way that their community council meets. They met for the first time in September, and that was the first time that they were able to come together and see the plan, and so they would like more time, obviously, to sit down and gather the, you know, the stakeholders that participated in the planning process, and come up with a finalized scenario. So, they feel very rushed, having to present one to the Planning and Zoning Commission before it's adopted. So, that, that's a big reason. So, but, again, the intent is to decide on a preferred scenario, and then to move forward with that. One of the reasons that that's so important is because of the KAC timeline. We would like the ability to coordinate with the design team when that's selected, and so that's a very time-sensitive thing that needs to happen. So, does that explain a little bit why?
Well, yeah, I know why it's in there as it is, and I, in fact, I like the sort of vagueness of it. The more specificity that it has, and the fact that there's absolutely no funding tied to any of this, you, my only response to that would be to vote the thing out, because I'm not, I'm not quite sure how we would deal with a specific plan that has footprints, and lot layouts, and all this kind of stuff, with no funding attached to it, and no real, clear implementation moving forward. So, again, I'm trying to work with you to say, I see how this could be a community vision, I see how it could be a helpful tool, but I think if it goes sort of too far, and tries to be more than really a vision, I think you lose me on that, and I don't know that it's appropriate to include as an element of the comprehensive plan at this point. So, I'm happy to work more with you through that, but those are, those are sort of the conditions of my endorsement, if you will, on this plan.
And thank you, Commissioner Robinson. I understand that concern, and certainly, again, the scenarios are just meant to be visual representations of what the community's desires were, that they projected during the public workshops, and those are visual representations, and that's all that they're meant to be in this planning document. And they don't, the scenarios themselves are not meant to be elements of the comprehensive plan. Elements of the comprehensive plan gets more into the design guidelines that are included in this plan. Those are more in tune with elements. Those are drawn directly from Comprehensive Plan 2020, and so they are a reflection of that plan, and they are, it is part of the municipal charter. The purpose of a neighborhood plan is to reflect the overall Anchorage Bowl Comprehensive 2020 plan, and I've highlighted text from the charter regulations in the email that I sent out today. So, your concerns about, you know, what's to be an element of the Comprehensive 2020, I tried to make that as clear as possible.
Yeah, I guess my final comment on that, and I know I won't speak for him, but having had numerous conversations with Commissioner Phelps, I think he would pick up on this as well, which is, you know, where you were headed with that, is there sort of elements of this that are more comprehensive plan-like than others, and I think that is our, you know, biggest struggle, and I think that's going to be the work that needs to happen between now and when we see this plan again, so that we have comfort to adopt it. I know this is a neighborhood plan, I know it's different than the comprehensive plan, than Anchorage 2020. It's a step-down plan, in effect, but there are elements of it that are, that are so specific, that in fact, that the commission is having trouble with, the lines blur even more between the plan and the zoning code, and I think we need to, we need, that's, the role of this executive summary, or something right up front in this document, laying it out, is really going to be necessary, or I think there's going to be issues moving this forward. And in sum, I think it's important to move this forward. I certainly have every hope to do so. I think it provides the community some leverage, and when I say "community," I mean the neighborhood of Government Hill and the municipality of Anchorage, some leverage as it relates to the road project. I think it's an important thing to do, but we've got a little work to do. So, with that, I support the motion to postpone to the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. It's been moved by Commissioner Parks to postpone and seconded by Commissioner Hickel. Is there any objection to the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't, not voicing objection. I just wanted to remind the commission that we have to get this to the assembly by December at some point. So, if that's still a possibility, that would be great. We just have to have presented it to the assembly in December. That's our deadline with the memorandum of understanding that we've signed with Cabada and Federal Highways Administration.
Well, that will be our goal also, dependent upon the amount of information and the answers to the questions, how soon we can get the answers to the questions that have been asked. Thank you. Commissioner Bruce?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, would say that you have a lot of work to do between now and our next meeting, if you want to see this moved.
I'm, it's my absolute goal and desire to have the Planning and Zoning Commission's blessing for this plan, so that it can move forward. So, I'm happy to dedicate all my hours to making that. So, just let me know what I need to do, and I'll be happy to do whatever it takes.
All right, thank you very much. This, I believe the motion included a postponement to the December 3rd meeting, is that, yes? All right, very good, moving on. Thank you. We are now moving on to the, I saw no objection, seeing and hearing no objection, that motion is approved? All right, now moving on to the regular agenda, under item 5A, case 2012-125, design study report for Mountain View and McCary Street intersection and safety upgrades. This is not a public hearing, and there will be no public testimony taken. I'm curious if there was anyone here who thought that this might be a public hearing? No. All right, very good. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the draft design study report for Mountain View Drive and McCary Street intersection and safety upgrades project. The project goal is to improve vehicular and pedestrian safety, reduce traffic congestion, and improve traffic circulation at the Mountain View Drive-McCarry Street intersection. The design life of the project will be 20 years. There are also additional improvements for the project as outlined on pages one and two of the staff report. For this project, four alternatives were considered. Of those four, alternative C is the preferred alternative with either option one or option two. This alternative was chosen as it accomplishes the project goals by improving both pedestrian and vehicle operations and safety, and has the least impact to the land adjacent to the project. Staff spoke with the municipal project manager about having two options under consideration, and their reply was that PMNE wishes to have both options available for further evaluation after they've received all review comments, before they make their final decision. The department recommends approval of the preferred alternative C with options one and two, with the three conditions as outlined on page four of the staff report.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions of staff? Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, I did talk to PMNE about connection to bus stops, and they, I believe, are going to make every effort to include those in the project, the ones that are near to where the project intersection will occur.
And I apologize, I think you explained this, but we're recommending, we're not recommending option one and two, right, because there was-
It's option one or two.
It is one or two, thank you very much, that-
It's option C.
Right.
Alternative three, C, sorry, with either option one or option two.
And we're not, we can't consider option number one or two?
You certainly can, considering them, but PMNE's wishes is that you leave it open for them to make that final decision, based on review comments that are still coming in.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused. PMNE is preferring option number three?
No, alternative C, alternative C has two options.
Right, and that is what is preferred from PMNE, and to leave alternative C with two options open.
Yes.
However, it is the commission's ability to also consider option A and B.
You mean, option A or B, or, yes, that's true.
That, so all options are on the table. We don't have to limit ourselves. Right, but that, yes, yeah, yes, that is correct. Commissioner Robinson?
Just on option two, or option C two, is the, that north, I guess when you're calling it four legs, you're talking about the main, the main, it'd be the north leg that's added, the access into Davis Park. That is where one, it's a very, and I use that park a fair amount, but there's any number of places you get into that park. It's actually pretty confusing. But is that actually one of the existing areas where you can access the driveway or the parking area?
To the chair, Mr. Robinson, I'm not quite sure if that is an access to the park there or not.
Guess what I'm, what, my question is, is it would be helpful to have that clarity, that in the event that that's not shown, and you're sort of blocking access there, you know, sort of the remnant parking that's, the parking gets pretty skinny in there? Are we creating a parking, I mean, it seems like it's kind of difficult to just look at the roundabout without looking at the access into the, into the park. And all we can do is say, hey, approve these options with, you know, by resolving the park access, but if you had any information, that'd be helpful to, in this conversation.
In terms of more information, I can say that both the design consultant, Kenny Engineering is here, as well as PMNE staff are here. So, if you have more detailed questions, they are here to answer those.
Okay, well, maybe that, and they'll be given a chance later, is that what?
They can come up at any time.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, the other one, the other question that I had is, on that same option, adding that right, right turn lane, or the extra right-only option to head south on McCary as you're heading eastbound on, on Mountain View Drive, and, you know, one of the, one of the stated, you know, one of the stated reasons for the project is pedestrian safety and everything else, and I just would have a concern, or certainly would like to hear your thoughts on, you know, creating that faster right-turn access across that, you know, cross that pedestrian crossing. Are you creating, you know, an additional hazard there, or how, you know, how does that work from a traffic or pedestrian potential conflict? Those are, those are my two questions.
All right. Are there any other questions before we ask the consultant to come forward?
Okay, well, I have a couple of general questions. Did I read correctly that this intersection is not the number-one priority from the Mountain View Community Council?
Madam Chair, where did you see that?
Well, I just saw that in some sort of comments. I don't know specifically where, but every community council has their wish list, and I believe I read somewhere that this intersection was number three on the community council's wish list. And then, I'm wondering how much traffic compared to other intersections around town that this intersection generates?
In terms of number of cars going through it?
Right. How did, how did this get, this intersection get to this particular point in a design-
in a design study?
I think the design consultants have the answers to those questions.
Okay. And then I noticed that most of the accidents were really caused not because of the intersection, but because some of the conditions, the conditions of the driver. And my other question has to do with on page 72 from the Kenny Engineering Report, the 42-inch concrete pipe water main serving from Eklutna, that this might be an additional cost to, to move. So those are some of my questions that I have. And, you know, from what I can see, you know, this goes from a $22,000 light versus a $2.5 million project versus a $2.7 million project versus a $187,000 project. And so I just am curious how we could have such a wide range as far as a solution to an intersection problem that doesn't really appear on anybody's list as being a number one priority from the Mountain View Community Council or as, you know, a high-impact intersection. So those are my questions. Any other comments before having the consultants come forward? All right. Mr. Kenny?
Thank you. I'm here with Juan Lee from CRW. He's our public involvement consultant. And Russ Oswald is our project manager. He's with the municipality. I would like to first, if I may, give a brief overview and perhaps augment some of the material that you have in your packages. And then I'll try to address those questions as I come across them. And if I miss them, please answer them again. So we've been tasked with designing an intersection at the Mountain View McCary location. During the early public involvement in the concept report and the early part of the design study report, we identified three major issues that we thought should be addressed. The first being that this is a very highly-used pedestrian bicycle route and a lot of pedestrians pass through this intersection. We heard that in the public involvement. And we also saw a lot of statistics that bear that as well. The Mountain View neighborhood has the lowest auto ownership in, in the city. So most people there are either walking or biking or using the bus. The transit folks tell us that Route 45 is one of the highest routes, actually their highest ridership route in the system. So that kind of amplifies the fact that this is really a walking community. In addition, we collected data during May of this, this last May, and we found that in addition to counting cars, we counted pedestrians, this intersection had well over 70 pedestrians and bicycles using the intersection several times during the day. So that leads us to believe that this is a, you know, one of Mountain View's highest priorities is, is to make this a pedestrian safe and mobile intersection. The second issue that we're trying to solve is safety. We had 28 crashes in 10 years. Of those, a couple were pedestrian accidents, two were pedestrian accidents. And that number seems low, but proportionally it's a very high number of pedestrians for an intersection. And we don't usually find that. So in addition, it has a high crash rate, not an abnormally high crash rate, but the crash, the pedestrians, the amount of pedestrians that are there certainly give us some concern. Finally, the third issue is traffic congestion. Right now, the northbound left turns, which are under stop sign control, experience very high delays during the day. And in the future, we can expect traffic to grow between 20 and 40% over the 20-year design life. And that problem is only going to get worse. We're going to probably see some very long queues, much longer than they are now. And, well, things will get better, worse. Right, we did count about 120 in the morning turning northbound left and 80 or so in the evening. That leads us to alternatives to fix this intersection or to, you know, to address these issues. The first being we have a couple of low-end alternatives which kind of gives us a wide range of solutions. On the lower end, we have the alternative A, which is essentially a no build that might be modified with additional stop signs on the two uncontrolled approaches that are there now. The alternative D is the pedestrian refuge alternative. Both of these are very low cost. They were, they don't address all the issues that I spoke of above. In some way, they do fail either pedestrian mobility, safety, safety or vehicle, just solving the vehicle congestion issue. From there, we go to a couple of higher-end alternatives, and there really is probably no in-between alternatives. But the higher-end alternatives are signalization of the intersection or the modern roundabout. The signal would be warranted now, but it's only marginally warranted. It only meets one signalization warrant. And although we would expect that during the future, the warrants, there'd be additional warrants be met. But right now, the volumes and the accidents don't necessarily present a strong case for providing a signal. In addition, when you compare a signal to a roundabout, signals generally don't perform as well in both safety. They generally don't provide the same crash reduction that you would find in a roundabout. And in this particular case, the roundabout operations would be much better than, or would be better than a, than a signal intersection. The one, the other downside to this signal is from the pedestrian standpoint, we would provide crosswalks. If you turn to page, I think it's page 60, you can see a kind of a presentation of our signal. You will see that we have crosswalks on the south leg and on the east leg, but there would not be a crosswalk on the west leg because of the conflict with the northbound left turns. And that's just a policy at these T intersections. So from the context of a pedestrian, you're going to have some out of the direction travel there. And as such, it's not going to be quite as good as, as the roundabout. So roundabouts, which are presented on page 62 and 63 of your packet, we concluded were a good alternative for this intersection. They do provide superior operations for both pedestrians and vehicles. They provide a safety aspect, that crash reduction aspect that would be, you know, over the years would probably greatly benefit the intersection users. And with regards to some of the roundabout options, I think I'm going to try to go through some of these questions now. And first of all, there's a question about the driveway. Presently, the driveway is offset from the intersection to the east about, I think about 100 feet or so. So right now, the driveway does not feed into the intersection. The one option we do show has the driveway empty or connected to the roundabout. There's another option that we show that we remove the driveway several hundred feet to the east. Either one of those would, would work from the roundabouts operation. We just expect to work with the municipality's parks department and the Mountain View Lions Club to figure out which the best option is there. And as a matter of fact, we have a meeting next week with the Mountain View Lions Club who controls the park or runs the park. Let's see. That was one question. The second, with regards to the volumes, I think this roundabout, a single lane roundabout around town, you might take a look at the Southport Roundabout, is probably similar in volumes to what we're going to see there at Mountain View, maybe less. But anyway, we propose, you know, a single lane roundabout, circulatory lane and single lane approaches. Another question came up about the eastbound right turn lane. The eastbound right turn lane was proposed because if, if our forecasts are correct, we might see a queue that spills back into the Pine Street intersection to the west. That eastbound right turn lane would eliminate much of that queue. Although, without that eastbound right turn lane, the roundabout would be expected to operate very well anyway. But you'd occasionally see a queue back up into the Pine Street intersection. So I, am I missing anything?
Well, we have some questions in the queue. So Ms. Dean? Thank you for your, for your helpful information.
You're welcome.
Through the chair. Have you found a study or something that shows that the roundabouts are safer for pedestrians and bicycles than lighted or signed intersections? I live a few blocks from the Dowling New Seward Roundabout. I drive it at least four times a day because I go home for lunch. It's absolutely horrible for pedestrians and bicycles, from what I've seen, because people are looking to the left. They're not looking both ways when they approach the intersection when it comes to vehicles. And there's been so many almosts that I've seen, and I'm sure there have been accidents. But I'm looking for some kind of backup to warrant the amount of money you're asking for to do the roundabout and show that it's so much safer for pedestrians and bicycles. Do you have anything to back that up?
Yes, we do. On a national level, a lot of research points to, to that if you have a signal and you put a roundabout in, you can expect a 70% decrease in pedestrian crashes at the, at that roundabout. At the Dowling intersection, that's probably an unusual roundabout in many ways. And it's not representative of this one at all. We have a single lane approaches, a circulatory, one circulatory lane. So it's going to be a rather simple roundabout. Pedestrians crossing that will be able to cross one lane at a time, get to a refuge and then cross the second lane. In the roundabouts around the state, the state DOT has been tracking crashes at the roundabouts since they started putting them in about 10 years ago. And overall, in not including the Dowling roundabouts, but, well, including the Dowling roundabouts, as a group, they have about 60% less, fewer crashes than would be expected if all these intersections were signalized. If you eliminate the Dowling roundabouts, there's about 85% reduction in crashes than you, than you'd find if they were all signalized. So these roundabouts have been performing very, very well, actually much better than what we find at the national level. With regards to pedestrians, though, there hasn't been a documented crash, pedestrian or bicycle crash at any of the roundabouts around the state that they put in. And they put in, oh, I don't know, 10 or so now. So they've been performing rather well. There is a perception that they don't work as well with, with pedestrians and bikes. But I think that if you use Dowling Road as your barometer, it's, it's probably skewed a bit. Other, other roundabouts around town are doing quite well.
The other issue that I have with the Dowling New Seward intersection too, is that people race it. They do it as fast as they possibly can.
Yes.
If it's not a very busy time, people fly. And if there's pedestrians and bicycles, I honestly don't know how they're going to deal with that. How are you going to deal with calming traffic so you don't get people flying through the roundabout?
Well, I'll just remind everyone that Dowling was one of the first roundabouts around the state. And since then, we've learned a lot about roundabout design. And we're pretty confident that the design standards that we have in place now, which have been gradually improving over time, will slow vehicles down through this roundabout. You know, our calculations show, show that. And we fully expect that a roundabout operating there will be, will function quite well.
Commissioner Pruse?
Well, thank you. Little did I know that 40-some years ago, I'd get to be asking Mr. Kenny so many questions. I would have taken a lot of notes back in the day.
Yes.
Couple of quick questions. My first one is, did you consider truck traffic on your roundabout? I know there's a different size roundabouts, the C Street in O'Malley, obviously the Dowling ones that were just mentioned earlier versus, versus this one. So the, my concern obviously would be is, is a truck being able to, especially pulling a trailer?
Yes.
A 53-foot trailer, to be exact. And we'll say a 300-inch wheel-based tractor-
Yes.
-being able to get around the roundabout without, one, doing damage to the infrastructure itself, two, clipping some other vehicles. So that's my first question.
Okay. Thank you for asking that. We did consider trucks. This is a collector-collector intersection. So our design vehicle normally is a WB50 with a, you know, 50-foot overall. For the Mountain View traffic, though, we went ahead and designed it for a WB67, 67 feet from front to end. And we've designed it so that trucks will be able to navigate the roundabout. But when they navigate the roundabout, they'll have to, more than likely, their swept path is going to encroach upon what we call the truck apron, that central circular area, much in the same way that we look at C and O'Malley. And trucks will be going through it slow, but they'll be able to navigate that pretty well. So the answer, long answer to your question is, yes, we've considered it and we're confident that trucks should be able to use it.
So the center, the center will be made that the tire actually can ride up on it?
Yes.
Similar to the C Street in-
Very similar to it.
O'Malley.
It'll discourage cars from coming up on the apron, but it'll allow slow-moving trucks to drag their trailers across that.
Next question I have is, is it was mentioned about the Eklutna water main?
Yes.
And I've, fortunately, unfortunately, I've had a lot of experience installing with my company that, that size pipe. It's very expensive. And I would venture to say that if you had to reroute it here, it would cost way in excess of your proposed intersection. Have you, is that cost, or is that something that's really being considered?
We're not, we're not going to touch that water main. We will, as you can see from your plans, we're shifting the roundabout to the south. And we'll have that water main located very well. The only thing that might, that we're putting in with a roundabout that would be a potential problem would be illumination poles, because we do have to provide illumination there. But we'll take plenty of care to avoid that, that water main. We'd have a similar problem with signals too, you know, you have to worry about the signal bases-
Put piling down?
Piling, piling would be a, well, yeah, we would have to locate that, and we will.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can just follow up just one minute on this water main. It says here, any of the alternative that proposed grade changes will need to be coordinated with the elevation of the transmission main to ensure proper burial depth is maintained, depth is maintained. So that includes raising the road? Or how are you going to address that?
Insulation.
Insulation.
Yeah, it could be insulated.
Okay.
If we lower the road, we might have to insulate it. I don't see that being lowered. I'd see that, that grade there, the general grade being maintained through the, through the improvement. But yeah, if we raise it, it probably wouldn't be a big issue. If we lowered, we would look at insulation. And we work with a WWU very carefully to make sure whatever we do wouldn't impact the water line.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson?
A signalized intersection allows brakes for helping down the road and with that intersection. The roundabout does not provide brakes for a portion of that. And is there opposing cross-traffic? Are you excited or are you worried?
Well, the first intersection's Pine Street to the west. And right now, they're, they experience no brakes either because the Mountain View traffic is uncontrolled. I suppose an argument could be made that a signal would provide some brakes in the future to, you know, when traffic gets heavy enough for folks to turn out a Pine Street that perhaps a roundabout does not do. The one thing I will say about a roundabout, it is that close to Pine Street, it's going to slow traffic down to about 20 miles an hour at, at, or McCary Street. So that may be some benefit to the traffic that egresses from Pine Street. So, that may be some benefit to the traffic that egresses from Pine Street.
It's just the brakes the signalization provides. I am not a fan of the speed bumps on Earmont, or what was the first one?
Dowling.
Dowling. I think that piles everything up there.
We're not planning to do that. We plan to build a roundabout that uses horizontal deflection to slow the cars down.
All righty. Also, your document references C, AWWU's comments in Appendix D. I don't think I have an Appendix D in my copy. So...
Okay.
Those comments.
I think that had to do with the water line. I'm pretty sure of that.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. You know, it's pretty common knowledge that many of the properties in Mountain View have been sort of voluntarily downzoned from an R3 or R4 zone, and some of the, a great number of these lots have had single-family homes built on them. So, I'm wondering about the population projections that even, that require or would validate spending $2.7 million, because I don't see, I'm wondering, on what basis were these projections made?
We, we didn't get into the programming of the project, but we essentially were presented a project to an area that we were told to make better.
Okay.
And that's not a very good way to say it, so let me try again. My understanding is the Mountain View Community Council has this as a very high priority. It's number three, is that right?
Three.
Three, yeah. The emphasis of, from their viewpoint, their emphasis is on pedestrian safety, pedestrian mobility. It's very difficult to cross Mountain View right now. There's a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrian-bike traffic that uses that intersection. So, we're tasked with just coming up with solutions for that problem, as well as some other problems that we've identified. The budget, $2.7 million, we do present a high end and a low end. The low end is fairly low, the high end, but it wouldn't really accomplish anything. So, if you look at what would make a difference, and that is the signals of the roundabouts, they're comparatively cost, and the roundabouts, we feel, are the better solution.
Commissioner Pruse?
Thank you. It caused me to think of a couple of quick other questions that you may have answers to. First is, has there been a roundabout versus signalized intersection? Has there been a maintenance study done by the municipality on the cost, on an annual basis, of maintaining a signaled intersection versus a roundabout? And then, the next question is, is the asphalt life or the AC life on a intersection, signaled intersection, the same as in a roundabout? In other words, the, you know, the potholing, the spidering, whatnot of the asphalt and the length of it? I'm just curious if there, if that has been done as far as maintenance is concerned.
I can answer. Your second question, I don't have any knowledge of that. I think that you're looking at the same levels of traffic going through an intersection. So, the maintenance or the wear on the asphalt, deterioration of the asphalt would be probably equivalent, one way or the other, whether you put a roundabout in or a signal. With regards to maintenance, I do know that roundabouts are generally cheaper to maintain than signals. And at one point in the not-too-distant past, I think there was a number of around $10,000 a year for maintenance for a signal. But that was prior to when the signals started getting outfitted with LED lights, so it may have come down before then. The one thing I will say about roundabouts to think about is that when you have a problem with a roundabout, roundabouts are self-regulatory. They don't, they're really a passive system. Everybody understands how to use them, and then they, they work with them, much like they do stop-controlled intersections. With a signal, though, if you have a problem, it requires an immediate response. Somebody has to be out there, you know, to correct that problem immediately, because it becomes a liability issue for the municipality. So, from that standpoint, I think roundabouts are favored as, you know, treatments at intersections over signals.
Thank you. How does your modeling take into account the highway-to-highway change, whether the state has changed how they're planning to program highway-to-highway? I think when doing work in this neighborhood, it was originally hoped that that traffic would be removed, you know, or lessened on Mountain View Drive as the glen became more efficient through those improvements. Is there a change that puts more traffic back onto this roadway now with that?
We were actually looking at the demand model for the municipality. We use that as the basis of our modeling, but it shows that Mountain View does decline. We then decided, well, maybe, because I work with demand models quite a bit, and I know that there's anomalies when you start taking a look at, you know, at a section of roadway in more detail, you might find that they're not really representative or don't make sense of what you think they ought to be. Instead, we used a modest growth rate of 1% per year, which essentially mirrors the population growth rate for the municipality anchorage that we find forecasted for the next 20 years, and we use that as kind of a surrogate traffic model growth rate. We did that because we didn't want to underestimate the geometrics that we would need for the roundabout. We, I would note, though, that the roundabout that we're proposing, one lanes in each approach and one circulatory lane, would not be affected if we were to use a reduced volume, and it probably wouldn't be affected even if we used a higher volume. So, for this particular case, the forecasting part of this project is really not as important as just making sure you got the right geometrics down to begin with. We need one lane if we're wrong by 50% or either way.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions from commissioners?
Well, I have a question. If you could turn to page 47, when it discusses crashes at this intersection, that there were 28 crashes during the past 10 years, indicates that it is not above the upper critical limit, indicating that the above-average crash rate over the past 10 years is likely due to chance rather than being indicative of a consistent problem. There were no major injury or fatal crashes at the subject intersection over the 10-year analysis period. And then, on the next page, it says, in the middle of the page, "Alcohol appears to be the common contributing factor at this location for the pedestrian-vehicle collisions." So, I'm having a hard time wanting to justify in these difficult times when we're having staffing cuts throughout the municipality, spending $2.7 million for an intersection or a roundabout or a signalization that doesn't really appear to meet the threshold of need, at least in, at least in my opinion. So, you know, we're talking about some other options that are available, it seems to me. There's the four-way stop for $22,000. There's the alternative B, the signalization. There's the alternative C, roundabout, and there's the alternative D, raised median pedestrian refuge. So, could you speak to the lower-cost alternatives?
Sure.
And why are they not the most desirable?
Yes. Specifically, the four-way stop, which is essentially a no-build option and just a change by putting a stop sign on each approach. What that would do is probably would function reasonably well in the near term, but in the long term, it would not function well. We would find a lot of queues and probably the delay on, well, we calculated the delay on Mountain View Drive that would, are now would be under stop control with this option or this alternative would become much, much too high. So, if the volumes were less, perhaps it would work well, but from what we see in the future, that's not going to be a very good option. With regards to the pedestrian island refuge, that would solve the pedestrian crossing, or at least go towards that, make it better, because right now, there's not enough time gaps for a person to cross the roadway without running across the road. I mean, there's so much traffic that the gaps are so short that, and we saw that, people were not walking across, they couldn't find gaps, they had to run across. And that puts the less ambulatory folks to a great disadvantage and something that leads to accidents. So, that would solve that problem, but it wouldn't solve the, it may not solve the safety problem. You know, we have a number of angle accidents, there are 12 or so. We have rear-end accidents that would not be solved by that, but would get solved by the signal or by the roundabout. And in addition to that, we wouldn't probably experience, well, we would forecasted experience that northbound left turn delay, that wouldn't be solved either with that refuge solution.
All these assumptions are based upon a proposed increase in traffic over a, what, 10- or 20-year period of time?
20-year period, yeah.
Over a 20, and what percent increase are you estimating?
A 1% per year is kind of the baseline case. We did do 2% per year as a sensitivity and just to see if these would function well with 2% per year, and they do.
And over the past five years, have we seen that percent of increase?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
May I also make just a comment on the costs? The costs were done at a design study level. We expect to refine those costs significantly. Once we get surveys in place, we don't have surveys at this point. So, that numbers, the costs that you see may not be representative of what the final design will be.
Thank you for that comment. I've paid for a few roads over the past 20 years, and I've never known the cost to go down from the estimate. Thank you.
Commissioner Pruse?
Could you tell me where the dollars for this project are coming from? Is it state capital dollars, not muni operating dollars? What's the funding mechanism?
Okay. Yeah. I'm Russ Oswald, I'm the project manager of PMNE. We currently have a million-dollar grant from the state, and the city programmed in $200,000 for initial study that we're doing here now.
So, it's safe to say that if it's a $2.7 million project, what would come from the muni and what would come from grants or?
Our current plan is to go back to the state and ask for additional money for a grant.
Okay.
To fully fund the project.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? All right. What is the wish of the commission in this matter? This is a recommendation. So, this is the design study report. We will not see this project again, am I correct, under the current rules of Title 21, Ms. McConnell?
Yes, you're correct.
All right. So, this is our only opportunity. So, any further comments from the commission? Is there a motion to approve or recommend? Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, in the case of 2012-125, the draft design study report, Mountain View Drive, McCary Street intersection and safety upgrades, I move to approve with recommendations C number one and two.
That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Pruse. Would either one of you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I'll be supporting this motion. I believe that there are a number of reasons to support the project, inclusive of the area is a significant connector, bicycle route connector from South Anchorage to downtown as well as to the Ship Creek Trail, I use it myself, as well as if you've ever been by Davis Park on a summer evening, it's one of the most utilized parks in the municipality. There are a lot of people around that area, and the intersection could bear improvement, especially pedestrian improvement. And I'd also like to note that it is one of the top three priorities of the Mountain View Community Council, as well as the Anchorage Community Land Trust.
All right. Thank you very much. Does your motion include the department recommendations that are included on page four?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Pruse, do you have any other comment you'd like to make? Are there any other comments? Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I have to say I disagree with Mr. Robinson, and I would approve option A or B. And I know that we're looking at approving options C, number one or number two. I would, I hate to see them not get a revised intersection, but I believe it's in the wrong direction, and it makes it far more dangerous for pedestrians and bicycles.
All right. So, you have objection to the motion, so the first thing that we'll need to do is vote on the motion that is before the floor, on the floor, and then we can find other, you can ask for another, you can create another motion. It's, no? No? All right. Okay. So, correct me, what is?
What you would need to do is either modify the motion on the floor with an amendment or withdraw the motion, but you have to work with the motion that's on the floor.
Right. That's what I, I thought, that's what I said, that we vote this motion up or down?
We don't vote this motion. We would do an amendment, and then you would vote on the amendment, and then vote on the whole motion as modified. So, you, the motion, you have a main motion, then you have an amendment to it, modifying it. Do you?
I think you can do it either way. Can't you?
You can.
Huh? All right. Okay. So, all right. So, you're providing an amendment to the motion. Is that what you're doing? Yeah, that's what you're suggesting.
She would have to propose it.
Right.
Second.
Right.
But you can vote on it.
Right. Okay.
And a clarification, the other would be to provide a substitute motion.
But wouldn't my motion have to say only that I would like to include A or B, not that I want to delete C?
So, that would be what your amendment would?
But I mean, that's, wouldn't that be what I, I couldn't ask for C to be deleted. I could only ask for A or B to be added. Is that correct? Well, I think that is correct, and I don't think that's her intent. I don't know if that's your intent.
You could, if you wish to replace his motion, you could move for a substitute motion that would put your alternatives in to replace his.
What if I were to ask that mine also be added?
You can do that.
And so that we were not eliminating A or B?
You could add, add as an amendment.
That's a friendly amendment.
I need that as an actual amendment, so give me a second to record the main motion, and then if you could repeat your motion for the record. Hold on just a minute. Okay, if you would go ahead, please.
My, I have a friendly amendment to add option A and B and not take them off the table as part of this plan.
That motion has been made by Commissioner Dean and seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there any objection to the motion? Commissioner Ferguson and Commissioner Mulcahy are in the queue. Commissioner Ferguson?
I don't believe we're doing our job in that case because we're not giving direction that was requested. They've come to us with four options. We've looked at it. I understand your concerns, but if we give them back three, I don't think we have worked as the filter that we should. but if we give them back three, I don't think we have worked as the filter that we should be working. So I will not be supporting the second amendment, if that's the correct way to, Commissioner Dean's amendment there.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Mulkey?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Ferguson, I don't know if it's, at this time, can I ask the project manager, if they don't get the money, where do they go? Do they go back to option one or two, if they don't get the $2 million?
All right, please come forward, thank you.
I believe that'll be up to the administration at that time. My understanding is we will probably take a step backward to just see what the community council prefers to do. But I don't see any more additional funds coming through bonds for the project.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, we need to, we need to vote on the amendment. Let's use our machines. Those in favor of the amendment, adding A and B is a yes vote, and a no vote is a no. All right, now we're back to the original motion on the floor. Madam Secretary, would you read the original, Commissioner Mulkey?
I was just going to mention, I'll support the motion as stated. Got, I lived in Europe for 10 years, and I've got a lot of roundabout experience, long before I came here. I absolutely agree, Dowling is a disaster. I don't know who designed that, who built it, but they had never driven a roundabout before, in my opinion. But I think we've gotten better, I think we know what we're doing now, and I think they're right, and they will do everything that's there said. Could, could we get by with a stop sign, or something less expensive now? Yeah, possibly, probably, but I think for long term, once this is in, it's done, and we'll never have to mess with that intersection for the foreseeable future.
Are there any other comments? Given the comments that have been made so far, let's use our machines. Did we, who's, did we have a second from Tyler's motion? We did, that was Ms. Prue, Mr. Pruse, thank you, sorry. All right, let's use our machines. All right, that is a yes. All right, thank you. I'm assuming that all of you are here for the next case, 2012-110, which has to do with the fire station number, I'm sorry, case 2012-128, the MOA General Government 2013 Proposed Capital Improvement Budget, and 2013 through 2018 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. This is not a public hearing, what is the wish of the commission? Do we have a presentation?
Madam Chair, planning staff would, could have a brief presentation. Office of Management and Budget notified planning this afternoon that they wouldn't be able to have anyone here tonight. What's sort of critical about, well, the commission wishes to get a recommendation to the Assembly, that Assembly meeting is next Tuesday, so that would be something that would need to be done, possibly tonight, with the reso produced shortly afterward.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, after reviewing this document, I would like to make the motion that we approve it as presented.
All right, thank you, that motion's been seconded by Tyler Robinson. Do either one of you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, ma'am, I would.
Okay.
I think this is one of those practicality things for us, we don't have a lot of control over the capital budget. We've reviewed it, I don't know that we can do much about it, it's going to go forward anyway, so that's the reason I'm, we'll be supporting this motion.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, ah, Commissioner Mulkey?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, just attention to the memorandum, that there's some paragraphs in there that we need to make sure get captured and sent forward about the Planning Division recommend we be given an opportunity to get involved sooner, better ability to track, so the points that are in this staff memorandum need to be captured in our resolution going forward.
All right, thank you very much. That can be included in the approval, without any issue?
I'm sorry, I was working on my notes, could you clarify that? You wanted?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll just keep the memorandum and send it forward with the package, is that door?
If that's what, what?
That's what I would like.
Yes, yes.
Put the memorandum, lift it, go it forward.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Ferguson?
I will be brief, but I will not be supporting this, because this motion has rolling stock in it, with a life much less than the bond issue. And I think we need to buy the rolling stock, but I think there's other ways we should do it. I recognize I'm one voice, but I would really like to see people take responsibility. I don't finance my cars for 30 years, I don't think the city should do that, and I would, so therefore I will not be supporting it. I support buying the equipment, I support buying it in a different form.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Pruse?
Yes, I will be supporting it, and I will tell you that I use this when we get, when we, I use the one previous to this, I use this to, when we get things in front of this body, as far as what's projected with infrastructure. I cross-reference the CIP budget with, with folks that are applying for conditional use permits, with whatever plans that come forward. It's a great tool to see what actually the municipality has planned for that area, should it come up, should something come up in this area for, for an intersection, a road, signalization, safety, whatnot. Unfortunately, it doesn't have AWU in there, which I think would be the other, another great tool for us to have, to be able to cross-reference what their long-range planning is with, with the development of this community.
All right, thank you very much. Since there's an objection to the motion, would you please use your voting machines? All right, that motion passes, we're going to take a short seven-minute break, and then we will return for the public hearings, thank you. All right, the Planning and Zoning Commission from November, of November 5, 2012, is reconvened, we are now in the process of the public hearings. So the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, one, after the staff presentation is completed, on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. A, petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes, part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, 5 minutes. If you are a member of a group, and representative of a group, then please identify that at the beginning of your testimony, so that we may time you accordingly. Individuals may have 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission, you may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed to the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within 7 days. This is case 2012-110. The petitioner is the municipality of Anchorage, the Public Works Department, the request is a site selection for a public facility. May we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm here presenting on behalf of a staff person who actually wrote the case, and was not able to be here tonight. As you mentioned, this case involves a site selection for the renovation or the relocation of Fire Station Number Nine, that is currently located on the south side of Huffman Road, and the east side of Old Seward, east of the Old Seward Highway. The existing facility was constructed in the mid-1970s, it is in need of major renovation, remodeling, and asbestos abatement. The current site is less than an acre in size, being 36,172 square feet. The size of the lot makes it difficult to rebuild under, for current standards, a fire station on this, on this size lot. This case was originally scheduled for September 9th, 10th of this year, but at the request of the petitioner, the case was postponed twice, to allow more time for community outreach. Presentations were made to Rabbit Creek and Huffman O'Malley, community councils, as well as Halo. The postponement allowed, also allowed time for the Parks and Recreation Commission to review that site selection study, and to pass a resolution supporting use of a portion of the Rabbit Creek Park for the new Fire Station Nine. They did add a number of conditions in the resolution, that is, was placed on the table tonight, they met after the case was written, and we received the resolution after it was, the case was forwarded to you, and it is, it's dated November 5, 2012, supplemental comments laid on the table. And this is a resolution of the meeting held by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The site selection study started by identifying a geographical area within which to look for a site. The area is bounded by O'Malley Road, Kane Street, DeArmond, and the Old Seward Highway. A series of analytic models were run using the geographic information systems. Initially, 23 potential sites were identified, which are identified, which are shown on a map in the packet that was produced by Dowell HKM, and it's, they're identified on figure one, potential sites evaluated. The page is not numbered, but it's after the section called Figures. These potential sites were identified based on two variables only. At the time, they were looking for a minimum 2.5-acre site size, and vacant parcels only. But additional parameters were added to narrow and refine the study, and these included, the additional variables included environmental considerations, access and traffic signals, utilities, site acquisition, and development costs, soils and drainage, and adjacent zoning. From the second round of analysis, eight sites resulted, and were deemed suitable for further evaluation. The third model included response time, and this probably is the most critical variable, it is mentioned in the Anchorage Fire Department Strategic Plan, that established a nationwide goal of responding to 90% of calls within 4 minutes or less. The further analysis, based on the 4-minute response time, identified three potential sites. And those sites are shown on figure two of the map. And the sites are identified as Site 12, it is located at the northeast corner of Lake Otis and Huffman, it is 3.9 acres, it is zoned R6, it has access to Huffman, it's privately owned, but 75% of the site is impacted by type C wetlands, and it is poorly drained. Site 19, it's located at the northeast corner of Lake Otis and DeArmond, it is zoned R1A. The site is located adjacent to the Rabbit Creek Greenbelt, just south of Rabbit Creek Elementary School. Access is to DeArmond and Old Seward Highway. The approximately nine-acre site is a park, although it has not been officially dedicated by the Assembly as park land. It is owned by the municipality, and a replat would be required to create a 2-acre or less site for the fire station in order to, if it is selected. The site has relatively good soils and drainage, and access to utilities. Site 23 is located at, on Huffman Road, and it is the current site of Fire Station Nine. It also has access to Huffman, provides good access to major corridors. The parcel is less than one acre, making it difficult to upgrade the station. The site is owned by the MOA, and it is served by all necessary utilities. In reviewing all of the parameters, Site 19 is the recommended location for Fire Station Nine. The most significant variable in choosing the location for the renovation and relocation of Fire Station Nine is the goal established in the strategic plan as mentioned earlier, to respond to 90% of calls within 4 minutes or less. The attributes of this site is, this location provides better coverage for the lower hill site. Approximately 700 additional households are added to the 4-minute response time. The recommended location for Fire Station Nine reduces the overlap of service areas with Stations 15 and 8, and it results in greater efficiency in the provision of emergency response fire services. This location provides better response time to Fire Station Nine's fire service area overall, resulting in greater efficiency in providing public safety services. A faster response time in the event of a code-red medical or fire emergency is critical when time is of the essence. I personally can attest to that, it is of the essence if you are having a heart attack. The recommended location does not overlap the fire station area of Fire Station 10, but it does place it in a better location to back up Station 10 in the event of a major emergency such as a wildfire. Now, a total of 374 public hearing notices were mailed on August 17th for the three potential sites. 374 notices were mailed on August 31st and September 25th, notifying residents of the postponement and rescheduling of the public hearing date to October 1st, and then subsequently to November 5th tonight. 15 notices from 13 households were received in opposition to the selection of Site 19, in addition to the emails that were sent to the petitioner's representatives that are included in the packet. The concerns expressed appear to fall into the following categories: loss of parkland, traffic congestion, and noise. Loss of parkland is the most frequently stated point of concern. There appears to be the impression that the entire 9.28 acres will be used for the fire station, as well as other municipal buildings that will be placed on this site, and that all the trees will be cut down. The fire station has not been designed, and the actual size of the footprint is not firmly established at this time. A compact development could result in a small site being needed to construct a fire station. The intent is to preserve as much vegetative buffering as possible to retain the character of the neighborhood. No other municipal buildings are proposed for this site, this location, it is only the fire station, and the final acreage that will be required will be dependent on the final design, and it is the intent of the designers to do as compact a design as possible. There's also the concern that a loss of a portion of the park is not being directly compensated. However, amenities for the fire station that are envisioned in cooperation with the neighborhood and Parks and Recreation Department include pedestrian improvements, preserving access to trails that have been used in the park, providing fire-wise protection, pursuing official dedication of the remaining seven-plus acres of the park. And Parks and Recreation finds that these features will compensate for use of a portion of the park to provide better public safety to the surrounding neighborhood, especially in terms of response time. Traffic congestion, number of site visits have been made by the petitioner's representative, and in conversations with the person making those site visits, it was revealed that school traffic to the elementary- elementary school did not back up on a regular basis. Traffic travels on Lake Otis to the parking lot at the south end of the school site. With the help of existing signage, traffic is generally one-way, exiting the school at the southeast, southwest corner of the school site, onto the frontage road where proceeds along neighborhood roads to the final destination of the folks that are dropping children off or picking children up. Noise. The other concern, main concern was noise. It is the fire department procedure when responding to an emergency to use flashing lights only when exiting the station, and not to turn on sirens until the fire engines have entered major roads where traffic is heavier, and both sound and visual alert systems are necessary to notify surrounding traffic. Additionally, there will be no external speakers installed on the fire station itself. With that being said, the department does concur with the findings of the site selection study and recommends approval of Site 19 for the relocation of Fire Station Nine. Now, it's subject to the following conditions of the Anchorage Parks and Recreation Commission. I printed out a copy of that. Those conditions were received, as mentioned, after the packet was written and delivered. We did get the resolution. The Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the Parks Department, Parks and Recs Department did support use of a portion of the park for the fire station, and those five conditions were recommended, and the department concurs with those conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? All right. May we hear from the petitioner's representative?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Tim Potter with Dowell HKM. I'd like to retain at least four minutes for rebuttal. Madam Chair, Commissioners, with me tonight to answer any specific questions or respond to issues that you may have are the team from Dowell HKM that worked with me on this study. Heath Landon of the MOA Capital Projects, he's the project manager. Deputy Chief John Drozdowski with the Anchorage Fire Department. Senior Captain Tony Schwam of Station Nine is here, as well as a couple other firefighter from the station, if there's any specific questions about the way that they operate, when they leave the station, or what they do, or even to give you their thoughts or opinions on the new location. The staff has done a great job in reviewing this case and putting together their package. I would like to underscore just a few items. Number one, as you saw with Station Number Three and that selection process, there is no perfect site. We're working around existing development, existing road patterns, and the like. Number two, as the Commission saw with the recently approved Fire Station Number Three selection study, the site selection for Station Nine is a multi-staged evaluation of sites, starting with 23 sites, paring that down to eight, and then paring that down to our recommended site, which is at the corner of DeArmond Road and Lake Otis Parkway. The critical goal is to pursue the most effective, efficient, cost-effective location that results in moving the greatest distance towards the goal established in the strategic plan for the fire department. And that goal is reaching the call location within four minutes 90% of the time for code-red calls. Four, this is clearly a balancing act of interests of all types in the pursuit of the best practical performance from current and future public assets and infrastructure. Five, the hearing has been delayed, as the staff indicated, for the most part to accommodate additional public input and outreach. The first extension was at our request. The second postponement was at our request as well technically, but we were asked by the Huffman O'Malley Community Council if we could delay another 30 days so that they could have an additional meeting and more time, which we did. We met with Halo one time, which is a hillside landowners group. The Huffman O'Malley Community Council twice, Rabbit Creek Community Council twice, the Anchorage Parks and Recreation Commission on one occasion, and Mr. Landon and Deputy Chief Drozdowski went door-to-door with the adjacent property owners on two different occasions. We request your support. I know this is a difficult, difficult exercise, but we request your support of Site 19, and we fully endorse the additional conditions of approval recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Ferguson?
The DeArmond access would be egress only.
Talking about pedestrian access to the park.
Could you repeat the question?
Are you, would it be your intent to continue pedestrian access to the park from DeArmond?
Absolutely.
Engine Nine responds to New Seward Highway southbound accidents. For the record, Engine Nine would respond to my house, by the way, so I'm interested here. DeArmond does not provide direct access to New Seward southbound.
That is correct.
And would appear to add a couple minutes to the response time. Was that factored into the study in any way?
I can't give you the exact time, but it's less than two minutes. It's 20 seconds or so to the intersection of the Old Seward Highway and DeArmond Road from this location. It's a right turn out of the site, across DeArmond, and then down south the Old Seward Highway to get the access to the Seward Highway. So it's, it's maybe 30-second difference from that intersection. Remember, if you're, if you're going out of the existing Station Nine location, you go out, and whether you go to the Seward Highway or the Old Seward, you get to go through at least one roundabout, possibly two. So it may have been faster before than it even is today.
I don't know if I agree with you, but I understand your comment. Thank you very much. Because there may be height restrictions, would it be intent to have a hose tower at this location?
The intent is to, in the design, incorporate a hose tower. There is an existing hose tower at the existing location. It helps, from an efficiency standpoint, to have not just hose drying at the downtown Station Number One, but also at the south end of town, so both ends of town are covered, and you only have to go half as far, basically. There's a variety of different ways to operate a hose tower. It can actually potentially be a tower on its side and a hose drying area. So it's not conclusive as yet as it'll be a tower, or just exactly how that would be done, but that would be a component that we would like to put into this facility from an efficiency standpoint.
Do you know how tall the existing tower is?
I do not know.
Does any of your people behind you know?
Someone might. Tony? About 35 feet.
Thank you.
Forty feet.
Some of the comments mentioned a rock climbing wall. Is, is it the intent to have a rock climbing wall?
[laughing]
The comments, I'm not...
You know, we're at such a conceptual level at this point, so it's difficult to say yes or no. Is it something that if you've got a portion of the structure where they can do rope and rock climbing from a rescue readiness standpoint, it may be a possibility. But again, it needs to be programmed, designed, has to come back through the city for public facility site plan review and landscape review.
What change in equipment is the city planning that is causing the increase in
Could you repeat that one more time?
Well, you've got a one-acre site that we're told is too small.
If you look at Stations Nine's current location, it is eight tenths of an acre, and it is an oddly shaped parcel, a triangular on one side. The primary thing that is causing the issue is that it's much more efficient, and much safer, and less prone to damage if you can have a drive-through facility. And that is the principal thing. It's not to say that you couldn't design a firehouse on the existing site and make it work, but you would not be able to have drive-through, so everybody would have to pull in and possibly back around and, and actually pull out into Huffman Road in order to be able to back into the facility. Not a good condition in any case, and it's definitely an unsafe situation.
There is an odd wedge-shaped piece of property. Is that another lot in there or on the existing site?
On the existing site.
West side, and I don't remember the street.
It's, it's called Silver Fox.
Silver Fox comes in. Could you not cut a driveway through on Silver Fox?
If you go look at the elevations of, of the site itself, it's about four to five feet higher than Silver Fox and the alley that runs behind it, that I think used to be called Jackass Lane, but they took the site down. Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Are there any further questions from the petitioner's representative?
I have one question of staff. Ms. McConnell, under the new Title 21, what board or commission would do the public site plan review for this?
Madam Chair, the Assembly Committee decided to adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission from 2010, which would place a size threshold in that public facilities over, well, facilities that are scheduled for major site plan review, which would include fire stations over 100,000 square feet, would go to the Planning Commission, and under that size would go to the Urban Design Commission. So, under the new code, this facility would go to the Urban Design Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. You have five minutes left for rebuttal.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Seven minutes and 36 seconds.
Thank you.
All right. So, if there are members of the public that would like to speak, would you please come forward at this time? Please state your name for the record.
Diane Schellenbaum.
Could you spell that for the Secretary, please? Thank you.
And my primary concern is that taking any parkland for development is a bad idea, and should only be considered as a last resort. Rabbit Creek Park is a park. It's signed that way. It's been used by the community and the school for 35 years as such. Taking it will adversely impact the neighborhood. Taking parkland is not a sustainable way to develop our city. Developing a portion of Rabbit Creek Park does set a bad precedent, in spite of the current intentions to the contrary. Parks are a precious commodity to our city, especially in our part of town where we have very few parks. The bottom line is the need should be overwhelming to justify taking parkland, and that has not been shown in this case. There are other options that have not been fairly weighted. The Dow report is inconsistent in many ways. The main arguments that we've heard in favor of Location 19 are improved response time and cost. They didn't mention cost, but all of those are surrounded by the fact that there's only so much money. Response time is lost, is an argument, in light of the flip-flopping budget proposals that threaten the funding for adjoining Stations 15 and 10. They were actually off the list for a while. The most basic input to response time estimates is the location of other stations, and they could be closed again in next year's budget proposals. For cost, rigorous cost estimates have not been done. There are many assumptions in the current back-of-the-envelope estimates that must be refined before good decisions can be made. We have significant disagreements with the assumptions in the cost-benefit analysis provided to date for both Site 19 for the renovation and preferable Sites 12 on Huffman or 18 near Bell's Nursery, which didn't make the final three. Some examples of uncertainties in the park site cost estimates are the traffic. We believe it's significantly worse than the report says, especially during the high-vol commute hours and the south high school lunch hour. There's nothing to do with the elementary school. The zoning, we think that it would require rezoning from R1A. The Muni says it wouldn't, but that's not how we are reading what allowable use and neighborhood character would be. The cost estimate is not based exactly on Site 19, and therefore doesn't include any of the mitigation measures that have been recommended, and it's 5.7 million out of the 6 million that you've got. The justification for taking parkland ought to meet a much higher standard than provided by the Dow report and the generalized cost estimates. Last, the Parks Commission Resolution 2012-08 does not support taking of the park. It says that if the park is taken, there should be the mitigation measures. Encourage everybody to read that. If, in spite of our testimony to vote, you vote to develop the parkland, I would strongly urge that you do ensure that all the recommended mitigation measures be followed, especially the dedication of the rest of the park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions in the queue. Thank you for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward? No.
Okay. Hi, my name is Cindy Dawson, D-A-W-S-O-N. I don't live next to preferred Site 19, so this isn't a "not in my backyard" issue. I ask that you oppose using Site 19 for the following reasons. Contrary to what you were told, the Parks Commission's resolution did not support this site. Rather, they stated if you vote to take our park, they have four conditions for mitigation. This is not the same as supporting it. Taking neighborhood parkland is not a sustainable model for development. In the city, three other fire stations were remodeled by buying adjacent land next, next to it to expand. No parkland was taken. We're told that Huffman's relocation is all about response time, not money, but don't you question why a better site for response time has been dismissed, and that's referring to Site 18. Our park is only one of two neighborhood parks in our area. It's a scarce amenity that people consider when buying and moving into a neighborhood. That's what my diagram will show. The reason for the fire station.
I'm, I'm sorry, but you're going to need to speak into the mic because we're recording this.
So this map just illustrates how few parks there are, neighborhood parks in South Anchorage. This fire station would not be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The building would exceed the maximum height of structures allowed in R1A, not to mention the potential for an even taller hose-drying tower. I would also expect excessive noise and lighting beyond its lot line. Since the underutilized Southport Station, Number 15, is at risk of closing, whether under this administration or another, then the Huffman Station should be remodeled in place by building up. Don't risk making another mistake by moving it and spending the money to move it in this uncertain budgetary environment. And why is the original Huffman Site one of the final three options if it was deemed as an unviable alternative as early as May 11, 2011? The Public Safety Advisory Committee stated back in May of 11, "We require new facilities, so the funds must be re-appropriated." I have one more point.
Please proceed quickly. Thank you.
The Dow report on page 15 said that Site 12, which is Lake Otis and Huffman, is the best scoring from a size, accessibility, and availability, available utilities standpoint. the best scoring from a size, accessibility, and availability, available utilities standpoint. The Class C wetlands that they refer to are on the backside of the property, not the front side of the property that faces the road where the access would be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
Well, they can lift that up there if you want to. I'd like for you to see that because that's very important. My name is Richard Klein. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to share some of the research and pose questions on the suggested Site 19 near the Rabbit Creek School that's been offered for the Huffman Fire Station relocation. Dow report said the land is free because it is undedicated municipal land. However, this parcel has been a parkland for decades, since 1974 when it was purchased. Although it isn't developed like ball fields, it is used. It is listed on several adopted plans, including the Parks Plan. An interesting statistic in the 2012 Anchorage housing market analysis shows that 54% of homeowners say that being close to trails and open space in parks is more important than being near a grocery store. People buy into neighborhoods for many reasons, including its character and amenities. Taking parkland for a public facility destroys part of that neighborhood and is not how a city should be operating. Turning to traffic, Site 19 on DeArmond Road, there's heavy traffic from the Rabbit Creek School and South High, but Dow says this traffic setting is needed for the site selection. Why put a fire station in the middle of all this traffic when you have other options? Aside from remodeling the current station, like several other stations have done, Site 18 is a few hundred yards away and doesn't have a school-traffic problem, and it's only 20-second driving time from Site 19. It would cost more for the development, is the only answer that I have heard, but that has only been a verbal comment and nothing has been shown in written form to back up the new number of 3.1 million that started actually at 1-point million. I called it an excavation contractor, and he got a belly laugh when I told him that the 3.1 million development cost, that was only for the excavation and water and sewer. He asked me if he had a site plan and had done core drilling and core samples to see the soil conditions and know how much would have to be removed, and asked several other questions pertaining to the development cost. And remember, some stations are well on sewer and septic, so why not Site 18? I'm told that this relocation is all about a better response time. Site 18 can provide quicker response time to south, going south into Potter Mark and the Stewart Highway, while still serving the lower hillside. Look at Dow's Appendix B, and it shows a four-minute response time. Notice all the red squares going south. Site 18 would provide faster response time in that area. One of the things that I've showed out is that I've located on Anchorage 2020, in Anchorage 2020, which we refer to, common values. Planning and zoning in 1996 conducted an informal newspaper survey. Over 1,500 people participated identifying what they liked best about Anchorage. Number one, natural beauty and setting. Number two, trails, parks, green belts, open spaces. Number three, outdoor recreation and opportunities. Number four, accessibility to wilderness. And then one of the least desirable changes that they wanted to make, one that was relieve traffic congestion, is what we're building right now.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right. Will the next person please come forward?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is John Dawson, D-A-W-S-O-N. I'm here to speak in opposition to the selection of the subject site. The site is not in my backyard, so I'm not speaking as one who's directly affected by it. I'm actually quite a ways away, but I do care a great deal about this particular park. It is the only park in the Rabbit Creek School area between New Stewart and Elmore. This is it. It's the park where I take my dog. It's the park where, for 20 years, I have taken my children to play. It is the only park that is reasonably accessible to my neighborhood and the neighborhoods around me. I'm also opposed to it because despite what Dow may tell you, I don't consider this an appropriate use in this R1A property. I am deeply troubled by evidence in this case that this is a result-driven process this time around and not one that is actually as objective as it should be. I note, first, that the geographic area that was considered excludes the other side of the street from DeArmond Boulevard, even though there's no particular reason to exclude that, and there may be sites over there that should be looked at. I note, second, that although this process shouldn't result in a conclusion until after the Parks Commission had looked at it, until after this body has looked at it, as early as March and April, according to the minutes of the Safety Commission meetings, the department, the Fire Department was already declaring that this is where we're going to be building a station. I don't know how that's possible considering that this process had not even taken place. The third thing that troubles me is the representation by the staff that the Parks Commission is actually, or the Parks Department, is actually giving you a resolution approving it. That's simply false. I don't know what resolution they're looking at, but 2012-08 does not say they approve this. What they say is if this body makes the decision that this choice of site is more important than a park to these people, then we want certain things to mitigate the damages that are going to result from that. But it doesn't say that that's a good idea, and it doesn't say that in the first instance you should be making the selection. I'm also concerned by what I see as just an assumption that this is an appropriate use in R1A property. I would note that this involves multiple apartment units in this particular fire station. If you were going to build an apartment house here, you would never say that that was a permitted use, and I submit that the fact that we're sticking an apartment house inside of a fire station does not make it a permitted use. I'll also point out that they're talking about a tower, which would violate the R1A height restrictions, and that they're also talking about an industrial garage for the maintenance and repair of industrial vehicles, and I dare you to say that that's an appropriate use in an R1A. The idea that you can make this consistent with the character of a neighborhood that is a park is an oxymoron. The park is the neighborhood, and the simple fact is, it doesn't matter what you do by way of amenities, you can't make a fire station consistent with a park. I am opposed to the selection of the site, but if this body decides, notwithstanding those concerns, to consider the site, then I do highly recommend that you take a look at the considerations or the conditions that were imposed by the Parks Commission. I think those are a minimum. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
Hello, I'm Mary Ann Jacob, J-A-C-O-B. I'd like to wish you all good evening and thank you for staying so late, and say that I'm very pro-firefighter, and I support the upgrade of Fire Station 9, but I am opposed to the use of Site 19. This location is less advantageous than the current site for reaching some homes in the area, as there is less access to, because of the access problem that's already been mentioned about going, you can't go southbound on the New Stewart Highway from there. There's no on-ramp. I also find it ironic that it's said that the station can't stay in its current location because there's a McDonald's next door, so we're discussing destroying parkland where people get more physically fit so that we can preserve the McDonald's. So, I think one of the public comments I read in the packet talked about getting another commercial site, maybe north of Cars near the nursery, and I wondered if there were sites like that that might be still close by. We've been told, secondly, or again, or more, we've been told that there's no traffic signal planned for in front of this area, but also that they won't be using their lights and flashers when they leave on missions. So, I'm concerned that they're going to have to do one or the other. There's a lot of times of the day when there's a lot of traffic coming down DeArmond. Often, vehicles come down fairly fast down DeArmond. I'm not approving, I'm just reporting that, as shown by the chronically bashed-in guardrail where these cars turn north onto the Stewart Highway. And for safety, I think when the firefighters are pulling out, there's going to need to be a lot more visual signs that they're coming out, either lights or flashers or a traffic light, or they're going to have to cut down a lot more trees than they've told us they're going to cut down so that it's visible to the people coming down the hill. I'm not a person who lives along the park. I live a few blocks away. I did not receive a notice about this action, and I think a lot of people who use the park would not have received a notice. I just saw the sign on the tree and called. And I wonder if there are data that show how many people use the park every day. In my opinion, it's a lot of people. I use it two to four times a week. Kids use the park a lot. I'm a pediatrician, and I think kids need a place where they can use their imagination. It's not a sterile parkland. It's all built up with toys, but just a place they can run. Anyway, I obviously feel very strongly about that and about this park. So, thank you for the opportunity to give my speech.
Thank you for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
It takes me a minute to get going.
Take your time.
I'm Mary Carlson, that's M-E-R-R-Y, Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. And I'd like to request that you send the planners back to the drawing board to ensure that they reach a sustainable solution in support of the Fire Department that will last decades, to apply their criteria consistently, something that was not done throughout this process, and go equipped with the knowledge gained by the process that we've all gone through these past few months together. If the goal is a four-minute response time and to minimize station overlap, the boundaries need to extend south of DeArmond. Also, considering two-acre parcels, which the Fire Department agreed workable, would potentially lead to a better solution than the proposed park site. I question the objectivity and consistency of this study, and will give you a few examples. First, inclusion of the only Class C wetland in one of only three poorly-drained sites described in the final three. Although Ms. Dawson's comments may explain why they did not eliminate that site, it may in fact be something that would be workable. Nevertheless, it appears inconsistent. In addition, there was inclusion of a single-family residence when the criteria specified the use of undeveloped land. It also notated that Site 13 by Bowman School had heavy traffic before and after school, but it did not note the same for the park site. No criteria referenced wildlife, yet Rabbit Creek Park is a birthing area for moose, owls, birds, and other wildlife. The selection process seems to inevitably narrow the preferred site to Rabbit Creek Park. A conclusion stated as a done deal, as Mr. Dawson said, on March 14th, months before the Dow study was completed and well prior to public comment. The true cost of the park site in those of all the final three are unknown, although estimates for Site 18 have unrealistically doubled since public comment began. However, lacking a promised-cost study, true financial costs remain unknown, as does the optimum location for the fire station, given that the potential closure of Fire Station 15 would eliminate the response time benefits of the park site, something that was stated by both Dow and the Anchorage Fire Department. Fire Station 15 experienced budget cuts in 2009 resulting in rolling closures and was the subject of potential budget cuts this October. Neither Rabbit Creek Community Council nor Parks and Rec agreed that the site should be selected, although both expressed the concerns that were shared with you earlier tonight. So, in order to ensure that the fire station ends with a sustainable solution that does not destroy parkland, I think it imperative that we start this process over and ensure that the location of the fire station will serve us regardless of the closures of Fire Station 15 and, for that matter, Fire Station 10. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
I'm Diane Holmes. Your personal knowledge was very helpful in critiquing the Golden View and Rabbit Creek Road intersection issue before. So, I'm counting on you to read between the lines now when you're told that the Huffman relocation is all about response time rather than money. Three other stations were expanded by purchasing adjacent land, yet we now mustup to using free parkland even when a better location is a few hundred yards away? Two firemen told me that Site 19 near Bell's is better. Solid cost estimates have not been done for Site 19 or any other site, yet you are being told that the site prep would be substantial for removal of fill, utilities, and a signal. Why isn't a signal needed down the street at the park site? You know a contractor can sell fill and will calculate that into his or her bid. And while public utilities are nice, all fire stations aren't on them. This is not about money. So, why discount other sites or just do a remodel in place if this is not about money? Did you catch the quick about-face in the mayor's budget recently? He quickly said that Southport, number 15, would not be closed. Why? If it was, then Huffman would have to stay where it is now. So, this is really more about giving the underutilized Station 15 more service area. Yet what about future budget cuts? Where do that leave us? No one is addressing the land-use plan map and the comp plan that calls for the Huffman business area to have a high-density housing area south of Huffman Road. That alone should convince you that the fire station should stay where it's at, where it will be needed most. Currently, Huffman needs remodeling, no question, and it can be done, build up. But also ask yourself, who is so interested in buying that current parcel? Some of you may know more. Dow says that the sale of the current station will help with new construction costs, but in reality, Mr. Hickel knows that HLB will put that into their inventory, sell it, and then use it for their self-supporting needs. Do you agree? I win. I got a bet with him about it. Don't be fooled. The park will reap, don't be fooled that the park will reap benefits after reducing its acreage. No improvements are desired. It's a wilderness park that residents use as is. Dedication won't protect the park either, because the city's legal opinion says the Assembly can undedicate it at will without a vote of the public. Please don't treat one part of the town differently than where the other three stations were built. Do not vote to use Site 19. Thank you. And Mr. Ferguson, I can answer your question that Mr. Potter could not, if you wished to ask me.
Commissioner Ferguson, what is your question?
What was the question?
What question?
Yes.
You want to know about a climbing wall?
Yeah.
Station 10 has the rope team there.
Okay.
They need a place to practice, although there probably is a training center over by Merrill Field. As far as your other question, I forgot what it was, but I had an answer for it.
I'm certain you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Will the next person please come forward?
My name is Ken Ortman, O-R-T-M-A-N-N. Thank you for this opportunity. I live about half a mile from Site 19, but I use the park about three to four times a week, all year round. I believe it's a very poor precedent to set by taking what is a de facto park for municipal Why, my second point, why are we talking about building a new fire station in the first place when budget cuts are forcing partial closures and curtailments of existing stations? This doesn't make sense. My third point, I don't believe we may understand that what the peripheral cost may be higher than realized. The Site 19 evaluation on page 34 states for the water supply that it may require, or will require, up to a 1,000-foot mainline extension along DeArmond Road. At $700 per linear foot, we're talking about almost 3/4 of a million dollars for this one item. In addition, possible upgrades to Lake Otis Road, which is built, which is in very poor condition with lots of potholes and is built with no shoulders, would require upgrades as well. as well. My fourth point, I believe the proposed two-and-a-half acres is excessive. Recent fire stations, Number 7 and 15, are only one-and-a-half acres. This would leave room for trails that could continue to access DeArman Road in a more wilderness setting. My final point is in the Site 12 evaluation, which you've heard before, states 75% of the 3.9 acre site is Class C wetlands. However, if you only need one-and-a-half acres, then you can completely avoid the wetlands area. And if you turn to page 43, you'll see the aerial photo, which shows the boundary of the wetlands. You can completely avoid those wetlands with a one-and-a-half acre site. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners and Madam Chair. My name is Elizabeth Eldridge, E-L-D-R-I-D-G-E. I'm a member of the Board for the Rabbit Creek PTA, as well as the Rabbit Creek Community Association, which is separate from the Rabbit Creek Community Council, which I should also point out was not notified about the Huffman Fire Station. The PTA was. The Rabbit Creek Community Association was not. Some of the concerns that I have also include the park, but since they've mostly been addressed, I would rather spend my time addressing the concerns of the Rabbit Creek Elementary School itself and the students and the safety for them. As the road currently stands for Lake Otis, the width of the road only tolerates a bus and a car. At this point, you could not feasibly actually get a fire truck and a school bus side-by-side, especially in the middle of the winter. And they have notified you, yes, that it is one way for drop-offs for parents in the morning. We do come in off of DeArman, go through Lake Otis, and go back out to the residential area. However, the school buses exit out the other direction and go back out to DeArman. They do not follow with the rest of the school traffic, so they would be going through the area that the fire trucks need to leave for their service calls. Also, there was a concern brought up by a parent of a life school student who is at the school. Yes, the fire station does not say that it will have any alarms on the outside of the station at this time. However, you would be able to hear the alarms from DeArman as they exit out and have to make that right-hand turn in order to get to some of their service calls. Apparently, the fire station and fire truck alarms are a trigger for many of the life school students who are actually being fed out of other schools into Rabbit Creek. The other thing that I wanted to touch on is that they said that there is not a very significant wait to get into Lake Otis from DeArman. I would challenge those people to go through that direction five days a week. The standard time is about four to five minutes at this time. There is a backup on DeArman, both directions, trying to get into Lake Otis every morning and afternoon in order to do drop-offs. And during the wintertime, depending on the snow conditions, that can be anywhere between five and 10 minutes wait for the parents, which creates quite a significant backlog for the fire trucks that we need to get in and out of that area, whether it would be on Lake Otis or DeArman. Was there any questions before my three minutes?
I don't see any questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
Hello, my name is Karen Arnold, A-R-N-O-L-D. I live in the Turnigan View area, but my home does not back up to this proposed fire station. I am a teacher at Rabbit Creek Elementary. My children went there for 11 years, and after they left, I've been teaching there for nine years. I am on pickup duty, two to three days a week, and I can attest that the traffic begins at 3:10. Parents start lining up on Lake Otis at 3:10, and we are at the other end with a microphone calling each child one by one to get into their car to leave. That ends at 3:45, five days a week. That is the afternoon congestion. I cannot attest as much to the morning congestion, even though I'm there, but it's a little bit of a different procedure and lasts usually about 20 minutes. But the after-school congestion is a real concern for Rabbit Creek families and children. Also, many of the children walk through the school path. I particularly walk to work as well, and we consider it a real danger for both the fire department and for us. And we are, I must say, very, very pro-fire department. They have been wonderful to Rabbit Creek. They volunteer for us. We have many teachers who are married to firemen, a lot of kids with dad-firemen. So, we are very pro-firemen, but we also, we consider safety first. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Would you, next person please come forward?
Good evening. My name's Michael Bailey, and I'm a resident in the area there, although not right next to the proposed site. First off, I do want to say I really, really appreciate the fire service that we have in this city. Having two young children and having that peace of mind and actually this proposed site moves it closer to my home, so that's a benefit to me. However, I do want to speak as a parent of students in Rabbit Creek School and the traffic congestion that is there. I would urge the petitioners to do more extensive surveys of the traffic patterns, especially during the winter months. Many of us parents actually walk during the less snow times and will even park our vehicles in Seafar Loop and take that cut-through because of the congestion there. Hearing the concerns about traffic congestion and noise, I think you cannot separate those two because the volume of traffic coming down there is going to mean that the fire engines are going to have to put their sirens on during those times. The access on DeArman to that park, there is a considerable drop, so I do appreciate Commissioner Ferguson's comments or questions earlier about the Silver Fox. I think that is definitely worth exploring, some more of the existing site. If, however, this site is deemed the only and most appropriate, I would ask that in the park planning, that as part of the park, there be additional parking spaces added to the park for the park but can accommodate the overflow from Rabbit Creek Elementary to relieve some of that congestion along Lake Otis Parkway. And then in some of the special events, like parent-teacher conferences, registration, those kind of events, there's just no parking along at times from a safety perspective. But thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Would you please come forward at this time?
Hi, my name's Mike Arnold, and I live adjacent across the street from the park and utilize it pretty much daily or every other day. But I just, I just think the municipality and I know the fire department and everybody looking into this, I appreciate them really going, but I think they can do better than putting it in a, next to a school in a park. And I, and I wish we were doing this 10 or 15 years ago. I've lived out there for 25 years, and I, I was expecting them to build that fire department or put that new station across the street where there's a gas station and everything now. And you see people here that are saying, if you got to, we'll give it to you. We'd let you have it. But it just, I just think you guys, the municipality and planning, I just think they can, they can do better. I think they're creative. You've seen what this town has done. I think, I think there's a better spot. But if it has to, it has to. But I really feel that, I'll tip my hat, I think they can do better.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify this evening? Anyone else at all? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Katie Nolan. I'm with the Huffman-Malley Community Council. I'm the secretary. HOCC has voted in support of the proposed nine relocation with the conditions that the rest of the site must become a dedicated park. We sent out a discussion about this issue in two newsletters. We received over 20 responses. All but two of those responses from people that didn't comment elsewhere were positive. Most of those people cited increased and improved response times to their homes. We also held three meetings about this proposed relocation. We had over 30 nearby neighbors attend these meetings, some of them for their first community council meeting ever, which was very exciting, and I hope they keep coming back. Their major concern, as you've heard tonight, is the loss of the park. However, in the process of this case, we discovered that this isn't really a park. It's R1A. It's 40 homes. And we came to the conclusion that with an inventory of less than 300 building lots in the Bow area, this has now become some very valuable property. And to protect it permanently, a fire station on a small portion of it and the majority of it in dedicated parklands is the only solution that we see is going to protect the balance of that property. The Huffman-Malley Community Council is going to remain involved in the design process. We want to make sure that the fire station fits in with the unique character of our neighborhood. We also want to have input into the park. We've already had several suggestions of what people would like to see with this parkland. And I want to take just a moment to thank some of the people that have been involved in this. Heath Langdon with the Muni has been wonderful to work with. He has answered questions from anybody that asks them, and people are very impressed with the representation of our municipal employees that he's given us. Michelle Ritter and Tim Potter of Dow, they have been answered every question we have, no matter how stupid it was. And it is very important to have that kind of exemplary relationship with the community. I'd also like to remind everyone that it's not just a great relationship that we all love our firemen. Our firefighters, Station 9, attend our community council meetings regularly, and they have, oh my goodness, they've taught us to work fire extinguishers properly. They have helped us learn CPR, and that kind of a relationship with the community is wonderful. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wish, excuse me, Commissioner Robinson, please stay at the podium?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question. Did your community council explore any of the other sites and were they favorable to any of the other sites in the site selection study?
Through the chair, yes, sir, Mr. Robinson. We had several people who looked at a variety of sites. We asked questions, both of staff and of Dow, and all those questions about the potential of those sites were answered. On some of them, it was wetlands issues. On some of them, it was drainage, topography. Some of them of the sites were often arterials and back in neighborhoods, which would not be appropriate at all.
So, specifically, you would not favor any of the other alternative locations after that analysis? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would the next person please come forward?
I'm sorry, Elizabeth Eldridge. I just needed to amend something that I said earlier.
No, I'm sorry. That's not allowed.
Okay.
All right.
I wasn't trying to rebuttal.
I'm really sorry. You've given your testimony, and you cannot speak again. Thank you. Would the next person please come forward? Is there anyone else who wishes to testify this evening? Anyone else at all? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is now, you have your rebuttal. Sorry.
I'll try not to use all my rebuttal time. Tim Potter with Dow HKM. But we are anxious to answer questions. I'm going to try and go through a lot of the comments that were made by the people that spoke after me. I'm not quite sure what to say about parkland use would set a precedent. Now, we have to understand that all of our public assets are public assets, and that as we do basically a business plan for the city, that we have to do a lot of balancing, and some of it's not necessarily comfortable to make the whole thing work. This exercise is truly taking a combination of where current and new assets are and reallocating appropriately so that you can get the best efficiency, so you can have a sustainable, approved way to do business and try and meet the goals that the fire service has. So, the ultimate thing that you're looking for is to try and get very little overlap or no overlap between the service areas and that response time. That's the most efficient. There's been discussion about why didn't you look up on the Old Seward Highway or north of the cars on Huffman in the commercial or industrial zone property? That's moving in a direction that while it may view to be more compatible from a development standpoint, it moves in the absolute wrong direction of response time to add those 700 homes that are currently not covered. They fall below Station 10 outside of Station 8, and this is the way to add that service. There's been a lot of discussion about sustainability in the budgets. And again, this gets back to the point of, as a city, we have to utilize our assets. When Station 7 was done on Jewel Lake Road, it was discovered and made very clear that Campbell Lake played a huge part in making it so nobody from Station 7 could get to the south side to Bay Shore and Southport in adequate time. It was eight, 10, 12 minutes at that point. And that's where, after Station 7 went in, even before they funded the medic unit, they put in Station 15 to cover Bay Shore, Southport, Clat Road, and that area. And that's where it was stationed. It's not a bad location. It covers a lot of people and a lot of ground. And amazingly, Clat Road, as a two-lanes-in-each-direction arterial-type street, gives great access going to the east, so that Station 15 can go much further than people would consider. I do not believe, while there's a lot of concern about the budget cuts, that Station 15 will be closed long-term and not used. I also don't believe that Station 10, as a relatively new station and asset of the city, also can be, can be closed. You know, will we have continuing budget problems? I hope not. I believe that we are climbing out of this thing caused by the tax cap and that next year will be better, and we won't have this issue next year or the year after. But there is no way, from a public standpoint, that we can take those allocated assets that are in place now and not consider them in this puzzle because they will be used, they are there, we spent a bunch of money, and there's people manning those facilities to cover our safety within the community. So, as you look at the current station location at Station 9, it leaves a gap going up the hill. If you move it further to the north and to the west, it leaves a bigger gap. If you go to Station 19, and I'd like Michelle Ritter of Dow HKM to hand out a drawing, which especially the contractors can appreciate. Site 18, which is owned by the High Church, by the Bahai Church, is a combination of two lots. We examined that. There's a 24-foot elevation difference on that property from DeArman Road up to the middle and the back of the property. In order to have a fire station, you can tolerate about a 2% to 3% grade. You end up taking out 85,000 cubic yards. We've used the bid tabs off of the city's, this year's bid tabs, and if the contractors can tell me that that's an incorrect number to use, I'd like to hear it. What happens when you do excavate that site to get your 2% to 3% grade on it, you end up requiring both lots to be acquired. Number one, we don't know that they're for sale. Number two, all of a sudden, now you're buying a huge amount of property and spending over a million dollars just to create a flat site, let alone doing a utility work. And that doesn't seem smart. We also have to be smart and efficient with the public's money. So, yes, Diane Holmes is partly correct. Is this about money to some extent? It is about money. What's the biggest issue and parameter that we deal with? That is the response time to cover the most people in the best response time in the most efficient and cost-effective manner. That's the strategic plan of the fire department. That's the strategic plan of the Fire Department, to allocate its assets in the correct locations. We believe that Site Nineteen at the corner of DeArmond and Lake Otis is an appropriate site. The area is not dedicated parkland. Seven acres of it soon will be, as a result of this process. The access and grades to DeArmond Road, Mr. Ferguson, if you look at the grades, the grades are relatively flat from DeArmond to the site at the frontage of the site. When you go to the east of the site, approximately where Mr. Klein's house is, up to wind, west wind, I guess is the access into Turingan, that is where DeArmond climbs, and the actual lots, which the state owns on the frontage, are much lower. And it would be very problematic to get appropriate access at that location. So with that, I would lastly like to address Mr. Dawson's comments and this timing issue as if there's a conspiracy. I want to assure you, there's been no conspiracy. We were doing and hired by the city through Capital Projects to do the study of both Station Three and Station Nine. We had basically both of the projects done, and in fact, Station Nine, the work was done back in March, about the time that the Safety Committee, and I did not know that there was a discussion, and Deputy Chief Trudowski can answer that question. But that's where we started getting to the issue of Station Three. These were on track to come forward at the same time, and they were held up, so Station Nine was actually held up while we are trying to deal with Station Three and the worm or area rather than a specific site, as you recall from about a month ago. And as a result of that, when we started getting feedback on this project from the community, now it's fallen behind. But both of the projects were online at that time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dean.
Madam Chair, I have several questions. Cut me off when I've asked too many. My first question of Mr. Potter is, you know, several people have mentioned replating and separating it into two separate lots and having a dedicated park. Has that been a discussion with the city at all?
Yes. We anticipate that we will be plating a property out specifically for this, with the direction that then the remainder tract would go forward with administrative approval through the mayor's office to the Assembly for dedication as part.
So when it becomes a park, it's up to the Parks and Recreation people to make sure that it gets parking spaces, et cetera, for being a park at that point? That would not be part of this?
That is, that is, well, let me say that the Parks and Rec Commission made it very clear that they wanted to have input and review of the site plan as it came further. So when we get to thirty-five percent or so, we'll go back to them and be able to show them what's going on with the project and have their input. So they want to get involved, much like the UDC will be involved, in looking at the site plan and how the thing fits with the park. I suppose they could suggest that they need parking spaces. You know, that was the first time tonight, it's the first time I've heard anybody suggest that there was needed parking for people that use the park. Most of what we've heard is leave the park alone. We like it the way it is. Don't do anything to it. But it would be our program to separate out the fire station. That may even mean that it will be a parcel on the corner and adjacent to the residential to the east, that that may actually still be a flagpole that would be part of the park. So the actual dimensions layout on that has not been resolved. So Mr. Klein still may have dedicated park adjacent to his house.
Then also, will Lake Otis be redeveloped as part of this?
We are assuming that there'll be a requirement for upgrading Lake Otis. The question will be how far it is. The road will probably certainly be required to be extended to at least the driveway in from Lake Otis into the facility. And there will likely be a discussion about a sidewalk or separated walkway on the east side of Lake Otis going to the school property.
There was also talk of a water main going to the fire station. The O'Malley Fire Station that's fairly high up on the hillside, do you know if that one is on well and septic? I don't know if there's a water line going there.
I do not know the answer to that, but I don't believe the zoo had water or sewer either. They may have had water, but I can certainly check on that. This site does have water and sewer directly adjacent to it, not on DeArmond. But the five lots that State DOT owns directly to the east of this, part of why they purchased that is that there is actually a water main that comes off of DeArmond and goes up into the neighborhood in the eyebrow to service that area. Sewer is in the middle of that eyebrow by Mr. Klein's house, and that would be extended down to this site to service the property.
And then I have one last question. What is the plan for the existing fire station? Do you know what the city's plan is for that long-term?
To my knowledge, there has been some discussion about that. The city managers indicated that they would entertain either proposals that were unsolicited for someone to purchase it. That would initiate, even if that were to happen, it would initiate a public process that is open to everyone to comment on. It would have to be approved by the Assembly. It could be that Anchorage Economic Development Authority, which Mr. Pollack is the director of, may get transferred the management authority over the property. Or in fact, it could be that it would go into Heritage Land Bank control. It's not exactly clear exactly who would have that. When assets like that become available, often, especially if it's Heritage Land Bank, based on their charter, the rest of the city agencies have an opportunity to evaluate the property. And if they have a need for a facility like that, they can indicate, and typically if they can prove up their case, then they would take management authority of that property. So at this point, it's unclear. I am aware that there is one commercial entity that may be putting in an unsolicited proposal on that facility.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Parks?
I've just got a couple of questions. Have you looked at taking the entry and the exit onto DeArmond rather than Lake Otis for the fire station?
We have a site plan actually that had two access points, one egress and one ingress-egress, and an access to Lake Otis. DOT, in their analysis and in their comments in your case packet, indicated that they would only approve and consider one driveway on DeArmond. So we would be looking for that to be an egress only for the medic, the engine and truck to pull out onto DeArmond Road. Return would be on...
The idea would be to recover on Lake Otis.
Recover on, return on Lake Otis.
Okay, that's...
When you're not in a hurry, nothing else.
That makes a lot of sense. That was my, that was kind of my question. The site itself is about eleven acres, ten, nine acres, somewhere around there, the total site?
The total site is nine point two or nine point three acres.
And we're looking at two acres? Is that kind of what you're looking? And you don't really know until you get the site plan done.
We approach this by looking at sites that were two and a half acres at a minimum. Now, if you get a flat site with good soils, with good access, access from both sides so you can get around the building easy, you can probably make it work on an acre and a half to two acres. In the discussion with Parks and Recreation, they said up to two acres. We believe that we can do it on two acres or less, and that's what our goal will be.
One more question, then I'm done.
Because it is flat. If we were on a steeper lot, you can't do it.
My last question is, on the site plan, the way you have it look, would you see site screening if you had access off of DeArmond for a parking area for the park? Some access, whether it be a trail or it be a parking lot? I know you don't know until you get it planned. But would you see some site screening for the station to the property that's to the east of there?
To the east of there, yes. We're envisioning a separation and leaving natural vegetation there. And if there's a need for an additional fence beyond a fence on the property line, you know, we would be looking into that with the final design. I think it's important to note, Mr. Parks, that when you go through the zoning regulations, what's really interesting about the screening and buffering requirements, that you could put a wrecking yard here, and the minimum requirement would be a thirty-foot screening buffer. We think that there's going to be about fifty feet from Mr. Klein's property line to the building in the final design. It's not done yet, but we think that we can deal with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Trying to pour over the coverage map since that seems to be sort of the driving or the largest issue in locating a fire station. Is there a way to quantify that coverage in a, you know, in a sort of numerical way or a tabular way, rather than, you know, trying to sort of blur your eyes and say, well, it looks like this one has more coverage? But is there a way that it's quantified from an acreage or property or, you know, something like that?
We actually, we actually looked at, when you shift to Site Nineteen, there are, I want to make sure I get this right. I believe that we add seven hundred. Is that correct? And we believed that out of the previous Station Nine coverage that we dropped, what was it, four hundred originally? We've gone out and done additional driving time and log studies to see if we were dropping people off that would not be served by Station Fifteen. And I've indicated at the different meetings that we've had with the community councils that every station that we looked at, and we did the four-minute travel times for all the stations in the Anchorage Bowl, so that we could see how the puzzle pieces fit together and where the gaps were, even though we were just doing three in nine. When you did that, Station Fifteen didn't look like it got very far. So in the yellow, you can see Station Nine at its existing location on Huffman, and Station Fifteen is in orange. And all the other stations, checking our logbooks and everything else, seemed to make, seemed to be really good. And we were very conservative, going only eighty percent of the speed limit to cover all kinds of unknown conditions, rather than a hundred percent of the speed limit. We went back out, Deputy Chief Trudowski, myself, Chris Harrington, our GIS specialist, have all gone out and driven the routes, trying to figure out why the mapping and modeling seems to be goofy, if that's a technical word, for Station Fifteen, because it just didn't seem right that they could only get that far in four minutes going to the east. We have additional maps that Michelle can hand out that show dots on it where you get two minutes, two and a half minutes, three minutes, three and a half, and four minutes on the coverage. And it looks like by the time you actually attribute where you can actually get from Station Fifteen heading east, that we, instead of dropping like four hundred and uncovering that, there's only about a hundred residents at the most that are left in an area between Fifteen and Nine on the four-minute arrival time. That may mean that they can be covered in four minutes and ten seconds or fifteen seconds. The red dot on the north side of the drawing actually is going up C Street, and you can get up to about ninety-sixth going up C Street, and you can get up to a hundredth and all the way over to King Street. So that commercial area is also covered, and you get good double coverage from Nine and Fifteen. What appears to be happening is that in all the modeling that we've done and the locations that we've looked at, Station Fifteen is the only station that has a almost limited access or restricted access arterial type street, two lanes in each direction that goes east and west. So once you get onto Clat Road in Southport and head going east, you've got a forty mile an hour speed limit, and you've got only a couple of roads. There's a signal at Timber Lane, which the opticom will turn and turn that green. You've got a roundabout. We were concerned that Birch Knoll Project, which I know Ms. Yoshimura is up to speed on and is aware of, we actually drove there, and we can, we can get, driving the speed limit, we can get, and going ten miles an hour within the ten mile an hour listed speed within that development, you can get to the back corners of that property as well. So it appears as if just going the speed limit on that type of street, which none of the other stations have, allows you to get much further than what the model processed, because there's just no friction on it. You're allowed to go.
Okay. Thanks. I mean, in the future, I think sort of, you know, coming up with some of those numbers in the report would certainly be helpful for me, but...
And I'll look at the GIS guy and tell you, because we say, okay, so how many are we adding and how many are we dropping off and moving out?
Right.
So he actually creates a polygon out of that, out of the modeling, and can tell you.
Yeah, that'd be great. A couple more questions, if I may, Madam Chair. We heard testimony saying, you know, why did we not look on the south side of DeArmond? And so, you know, if you're roughly looking, I'm just asking for all the gifts tonight. So, but if you're roughly looking the same area, right, you're on DeArmond, why make the border just the north side?
Ms. Ritter is going to hand out another eleven-by-seventeen map. We anticipated this question based on some of the comments from the public. And as you can see, all of the lots fronting on DeArmond, on the south side of DeArmond, are built. They are improved. You have to go inboard of DeArmond to the south and off main roads, if there's even a road connection to some of them, to get to a lot that is undeveloped, which then totally messes up your ability to get out on that major road immediately, because that's where you make time.
Okay.
Pulling out onto a little R-six two-lane gravel road.
Yeah.
It just is not how you meet the performance standard.
So according to this, you've looked at it, but you didn't note, you didn't note any sites that would be worth evaluating?
We did not note that in the study, because, you know, sometimes it's unfortunate. We look at things and it's obvious, and we don't go any further. And, you know, rightfully so, we probably should have said the reason that the boundary's at DeArmond is that there's no place to put it south of DeArmond.
Kind of a secondary issue, but one I don't think is a small issue. We heard testimony and staff has responded to this idea of it, us being, you know, an R1A and appropriateness of having a fire station versus rezone and replat. Without totally delving into that debate, if you were to assume that Site Nineteen would have to go through a rezone and a plating process, would it be as desirable a location? Would it still come out as the preferred location in your estimation, when you analyze those costs and the time that it would take to go through those processes?
Yes, it would. And the real rationale is, those processes, while, as you and I know, they can, they can cause brain damage and be a pain, those typically aren't the things that cause a problem when you're doing a rezone for a fire station. We're not even, you know, we'll wait for the administration to determine or the Assembly to determine whether or not they believe a rezone, a PLI, is necessary.
But that's not enough of a, to tip the competitive advantage of this site in your estimation, that added cost or process on Site Nineteen?
No, because if you, if you look at that, most of the other sites... No, because if you look at that, most of the other sites, we rezoned to something, if you think that PLI is the way to go, and public improvement should be on PLI, we'd be rezoning the rest of the sites as well. So it's not an additive.
Final one is, I'm wrestling, like a lot of people here tonight, with this idea of it being parkland. And I don't know that I want to really get into the idea of dedicated park versus not, or the legal opinion that, you know, in fact, there was no declaration associated with the land, even though, as you read it, it was pretty clear that the person who sold the land had intended it for parkland. Just, you know, I don't have it in front of me, I didn't see it in the staff report, but does the parks plan identify this area of the community as being deficient in neighborhood parks?
I believe that from a neighborhood park standpoint, that technology or term is that that area is generally underserved by neighborhood parks. I'm not, however, sure if the school property was incorporated into the calculation that led to that conclusion.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I just have one brief question. I want to confirm where the water line is going to have to be extended, or is that the case?
The water line will have to be extended from the state's lot directly to the east. The sewer line will be extended from the center of the eyebrow on, what's the name of the street? Good, Heath, do you want to?
I believe the sewer is directly in...
Sorry, who are for the record?
Heath Landon, project manager for the MOA. The sewer connection is directly in front of the property, and the nearest water connection is actually in Seafair Loop.
So the sewer is in DeArmond?
Yes, I believe so.
But there is water that goes through the adjacent property that the state has.
Water through the adjacent property.
And we may have these sewer water maps. I know that I took those to the other community council meetings, but...
You said you had an easement through Cut Water?
Let's see. Here's where you have this right here. You have water, right, water there. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm looking at, let's see, it's Figure 4, Site 19, in your plan, and it has yellow dots and black lines, and the, let's see, the sewer comes directly in an easement along the property line that the state has with Mr. Klein, right at the eyebrow on Seafair.
Okay. Thank you.
And water is also in that circle as well.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other questions, or, we've just done the rebuttal. Staff rebuttal? We don't need a staff rebuttal. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Case Number 2012, which is the site selection for a fire station 9. I'd like to make that with the recommendations that they have on Page 5 of the staff package, and also include the department recommendations that were given to us, Items Number 1 through 5 that were left on the table, which are conclusive.
Ms. Dean, do you have anything else you'd like to, would you like to add?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
It is a recommendation in this, it says, part of the...
Well, my concern is, I support the idea of dedicating the rest of this parcel, but we can't do that. That's not within our purview.
Well, we can support the idea in the form of a recommendation.
Yeah, but the wording is "secure the formal dedication." I mean, if we could change the wording to "recommend" or "support," I don't have a problem. But if I don't have any...
Madam Chair, I could change that. Recommendation's fine with me. Recommend a formal dedication, that's fine.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I think there is a difference between "recommend" and "secure."
Can you do it "subject to"?
Subject to? Yeah. I mean, I think we're just wordsmithing. It's not our, what we are doing is directing the petitioner to secure formal dedication through whatever means necessary.
Okay, I'll accept that. I understand, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anything, Commissioner Robinson?
I just had a question about this notion that, about the appropriateness of the zoning district, and whether there's anything inherent in this, or if that's just a determination at a later time that's made by staff, whether or not it's appropriate to locate a fire station in R1A with the heights proposed.
Well, as you know, we've had some emails back and forth today regarding that matter. I think it would be up to someone, to some entity or individual other than at this commission to, through somewhat legal means, to challenge the administration's position on that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Is there an objection to the motion? Are there some additional findings?
Madam Chair, I have some findings.
All right, thank you.
I find that when we look at this recommended areas that have been proposed through testimony, public testimony shows that this site is the best site for response time for Fire Station Number 9 to be replaced. It also, it appears that there has been substantial analysis regarding the site, the soil, the drainage, the utilities, and the size desired meets all the requirements that we have. The standards are met for consistently with the goals inside the comprehensive plan through the city and the municipality of Anchorage.
Thank you very much. Is there any objection? Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, thank you. I would simply add, this is a really difficult call, and I think that, you know, my number one preference would have been to see the site relocated in its current location. I think that the petitioner discussed the issues with that, including, I think, an overall objective of system efficiency. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that we need to look at the entire system, and if there's a way that those, over time, those areas, those response times grow between different stations, I think that's, you know, that's a positive thing. I also would have really hoped that we could have been looking at a location other than a park. And I do object somewhat to this notion that this is free municipal land. I get that it's, you know, I get that it's a public use, and we have a variety of public uses in our community. I think it's very difficult to go out and find parkland. And I think there's a cost to that, and I don't know that it was adequately quantified. But with that, I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mulkey?
Yeah, it was difficult for me. I still have not heard a compelling reason why we can't stay where we're at, and was hoping to hear that tonight, didn't hear it. However, and I was prepared to go against this, but the community council says that this is the site they want, 19, and they're not happy with 23. I would have preferred they stay where they're at, but I'm going to concede to the will of the community council, and I will not oppose.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else? Seeing and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. We're now moving on to Case 2012-127, the municipality of Anchorage. Their request is the AMATS Amendment to the Transportation Improvement Plan. It's a major amendment to the AMATS 2010, 2013. Two. So, yes. All right. Madam Chair? So, I'm sorry. This is Case 2012-122, the municipality of Anchorage, an amendment to the Hillside District Plan. This is a housekeeping matter as a result of Case 2012-110. May we hear from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, it's required by the Hillside District Plan that the land use plan be amended when a new facility or a facility is relocated, and that the land use plan be amended to reflect. As the recommended site tonight is within the Hillside District Plan boundaries, then the department-recommended map B should be amended to show the location of the proposed Fire Station 9 on Page 4 of the packet.
All right, thank you very much. Well, we could have a public, this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. And the petitioners, do we have a petitioner's representative? The petitioner's representative just left.
There isn't a petition, there's no need? Excuse me, Madam Chair, there is no petitioner's representative. This is coming from the planning department.
This is coming from the planning department. All right. Are there any questions of staff? All right. I would entertain a motion for approval? No?
Not according to what she just said.
Is it still a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay, so... We don't need to read the whole thing again? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to testify?
Diane Holmes.
Thank you.
It's really a shame, in a way, that with the Hillside District Plan so recently passed, that we're already amending it. And I know this is a housekeeping measure, but I wish those of you who really were torn had voted against this, and we could have found, we could have kept the site, the fire station where it was, and then we wouldn't have to do this. And you've got the utilities there, and it just makes me wonder how many more amendments we're going to get before we even implement the Hillside District Plan. When you know something's right, stick to your guns, please.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Is there anyone here, anyone else who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? Then the public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, in the matter of Case 2012-122, Hillside District Plan, Hillside Land Use Plan Amendment, Fire Station 9, move to adopt the land use plan map and incorporate staff recommendations as written.
Thank you very much. That motion is seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there an objection? Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. Now, we're moving on to Case 2012-127, the municipality of Anchorage, AMATS Amendment to the Transportation Improvement Plan. May we have the staff presentation, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Craig Lyon, I'm the AMATS coordinator for the city. And basically, we have a 10-to-13 tip, which is our four-year program of projects that has been adopted. And we have, that would mean that 2013 was the final year of this program, and the amount of time it takes to create a new tip, we would be close to running out of time to get it adopted in time. So what we did is, we want to make 2014 live. That's the main purpose of this creature. Usually, 2014 in our current tip is illustrative. We just put a nice round number in there and say, "Here's kind of what we're going to do." In this case, we're making 2014 live. We're making it fiscally constrained. So we have an exact dollar amount that we're getting as an allocation in 2014, because they just passed the new federal authorization bill in Congress. This makes 2014 live. And what that allows us to do is get moving with, or continue the work on Dowling Road to start the, excuse me, the construction on that project, and also the O'Malley Road, that one would be starting soon thereafter in 2014 for work done on that. So, other than that, the only change between the document before you and what has happened since, in the intervening time, is when this document came before the AMATS Technical Advisory Committee, in response to public comments and the availability of some other funding that Public Transit got, they moved 1.3 million out of a couple of different projects and moved it into bicycle plan implementation. So the allocation is the same. It's Transit, Public Transportation Department was able to identify some other sources of funds for doing the projects that they were looking at. It freed up that money to increase the implementation of the bike plan. Basically, most of the projects that we would be looking at implementing would be striping of the core, the areas and most core crash locations of vehicles and pedestrians, bicyclists. So we were able to move some money over there and look to implement part of that bike plan that was passed in 2010.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Are there any questions of staff? So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify on Case 2012-127? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? May I have a motion to approve, please? Ms. Dean?
In the matter of Case 2012-127, AMATS Amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program, I move to approve.
Thank you. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Dean?
They've given us lots of detail on what it is that they want to make the change for. Sounds like the federal government is changing their scheduling a little bit. So they've taken the opportunity to make some adjustments in their spreadsheet.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Ferguson, is there anything you'd like to add for findings of fact?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there an objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Now we're moving on to Case 2012-137, the petitioner's Community Development Department, the planning municipality of Anchorage, and ordinance amending Title 21 for sign requirements. May we... May we have the staff presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Assemblymember Tromley has prepared this amendment to the Anchorage Municipal Code, Title 21, land use planning to allow signs on multiple sides, on multiple sides of multiple story buildings in non-residential zoning districts when the sides of the building face a major arterial street. Under the current code, multiple story buildings in non-residential districts are allowed an additional building sign on primary and secondary frontages. They allow sign areas 40 square feet placed at the second story or above, with 10 additional square feet of sign area allowed for each additional story when the sign is placed at that level. This amendment to the signed ordinance would allow multiple story buildings to have a wall sign on any building facade that faces a major arterial street, no matter the distance between the building lot and the arterial street. And we just have one recommendation, which is just a minor correction to that ordinance as it's written. Basically, that correction just is asking to keep the, the reading, the language as it reads now. There's an example of it on Page 2 from the code.
Ms. Ferguson, I'm a little confused. So are you recommending a denial of--
No, no. We recommend approval.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from staff, for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify? Anyone at all?
Thank you. My name is Fran Gregren, and I applaud all of you for being so with the program. I mean, I'm sitting here drained myself, but anyway, I'm for this change, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here?
I'll hold now with you.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Seeing and hearing, no one, the public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? May I have a motion to approve? Ms. Dean?
In the matter of Case 2012-137, in ordinance amending AMC Title 21 for multiple story buildings in non-residential districts, I move to approve, using the recommendation that the city has supplied us. But I'm not totally sure if we're using this or not. Could I have staff clarify for me?
Yes, please. Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, we are recommending approval for this ordinance, except with that minor correction.
Could you read me what that should be? I'm just--
Yes. If you look on Page 2 of the staff packet, and if you look at the top of page, this is directly from the code, it says 2147060. And down below, there's an area that's been marked, and that's where the footnote is. You'll see A. But if, and then, but if you look at the ordinance, it's on the first page also, and it's crossed out the A, and then it's added R11A in parentheses. That should not be in there. We're just asking that that remain, kind of, remain the same way it is as it reads in code. There's just a misunderstanding on the part of the person who wrote this.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
If I may, Madam Chair. So, can I ask one question of staff, please?
Yes, please.
So what we're basically saying is, since it's very likely that any side of a building faces an arterial somewhere in the municipality, that we're basically going to allow signage on all sides of a building? Is that, I mean, you could basically find, unless it's up against the inlet or something, you're going to be able to find it on a map somewhere?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, yes, you're correct. It would be up to the business owner or the building owner to determine if it's so far away from the arterial that putting up a sign wouldn't be of much use. So I think if it's within reading distance of an arterial, it would be worthwhile on the part of the building owner to put up a sign. If it's a mile away, probably not.
But nothing in the code would preclude them? That's a business decision?
That's, you're correct.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So is there any objection to the motion?
Point of order, please?
Yes?
Stacy didn't quite finish her motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dean didn't quite finish her motion. She asked for clarification from staff. So could I have you complete your motion, please?
So, based on the information from staff, I would like to use that as my recommendation from the city.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hickel has seconded that. You have no objection to that?
Resecoding that.
You're resecoding that. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right. What? Well, it's okay. We're going to do it anyway, so. You want to talk about Title 21? You'll have to come to the meetings. Any hope for Title 21? Commissioner Ferguson, do you have any comment that you'd like to make on Title 21? Maybe we should, maybe we should wait until after we're adjourned.
I think we're going to have to do some homework. I think there's some points on, that we're headed that we're going to have to get with individual assembly people and get it brought up.
All right. Thank you very much. I would agree with that. I think we need to pick and choose. May I have a second for adjournment? Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. This, seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.